Okay.
Yeah, well, it's...
Perfect. Good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call the order of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Meeting for the date of January 16th. And let's start with roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Holland, here. Commissioner Seal.
Here.
Commissioner McCarver.
Here.
Commissioner Cassinelli.
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald.
Here.
Absent is Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, I'm clerk. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, of the agenda. One, just for the audience, we have one item on the agenda, which is the Skyward subdivision, file number H219-0087, which will be opened only for the application to be withdrawn. So that, we're going to only open that up for them to remove that application from, from the docket, and then we'll, with that change, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in an agenda, or a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented for the date of January 16th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have one item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes for the January 2nd, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post same. Motion passes. At this time, I will explain the public hearing process for the evening. We will open each item and then start with the staff report. The staff will report the findings regarding how the item or the application adheres to our Comprehensive Plan and Uniform Development Code with their recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present their case for approval of their application and respond to any staff comments. The applicant will have 15 minutes to do so, and after the applicant has finished, we will open the floor to public testimony. There's an iPad or multiple iPads in the back. Please make sure if you'd like to testify on a certain application that you sign up in the back, we'll make sure that everybody has a chance to speak if you wish on certain applications. Is there anyone here representing an HOA? Okay, we will skip that portion of that. After all testimony has been heard, the applicant will be given an opportunity to come back up, 10 minutes to kind of respond to public testimony, answering questions, and close the discussion. And at that time, we will close the public hearing, and the commissioners will hopefully have a chance to deliberate and make a recommendation or approval to city council on the application. So with that, we'll move to the first item on our agenda, which is file number H219-0087, Skyward subdivision. Can I get a motion, or we'll open this specifically for the reason of withdrawing it. And Andrea, is the applicant here for that, or are we just opening it and then having it withdrawn? Okay. So, can I get a motion to withdraw the application?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
Remove that we withdraw the application for file number H2019-0087 for Skyward subdivision.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to withdraw the application, H219-0087, Skyward subdivision. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post same. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to file number H219-0109, Edington Commons, and we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, if I may real quick, I'd like you to, I'd like to introduce you to our new associate city planner, Joe Dodson. So he has recently joined us, and you'll be seeing him at future commission meetings, so.
Hopefully you will help Sonia, because I know she's going crazy. We love her, and we want to make sure she sticks around.
That's the hope, yes, thank you. Good news.
Thanks, Joe, welcome.
Alrighty, so, moving on to the first item, Edington Commons. Since the commission hearing for this project back in December on the 5th, revised preliminary plat, landscape plan, and conceptual building elevations have been submitted by the applicant to address some of the issues discussed at the hearing and in the staff report. The revised plans have been included in the updated staff report.
Sonia, before you continue, as we continued this specific application last time, we're going to narrow the comment, public comment we're going to take on this application specifically to areas that we asked for in the continuance. So, I can go through that after you're done giving your presentation, but I want to make sure we had that clear.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant did submit a letter, and staff did provide a memo in response to that letter, and I'll just go through that real quick. The letter from the applicant was dated January 10th, and you should have that in your packets. The first item is the parking plan and secondary fire access. The fire department has no issues with the parking plan or emergency access as proposed. Second is the eaves. The revised elevations do not address staff's concerns, as they do not have one-foot eaves on all four sides. If the commission determines the proposed elevations are acceptable, they may recommend approval of the provision to city council. Excuse me, not approval, removal. This is recommended for aesthetic as well as drainage reasons. Color schemes, UDC 11, 5B, 8B2, state's designer view may be required for single-family residential detached homes if required as part of a development agreement, which staff is recommending. This is to ensure consistency in the quality of appearance and design between attached and detached dwellings within the development, as attached dwellings are subject to this requirement. Schools. Per an updated memo from Joe Yocum, West Ada School District, in regard to school capacity, the timing of this project is such that Oaihe High School will be online by the time there are residents living in this project. There are no underutilized middle schools in this area. Sawtooth Middle is close to capacity. There are also no underutilized elementary schools in this area, but Pleasant View will be open in August 2020, and the cap for Hunter Elementary will be lifted. Enrollments for next year are unknown at this time, and he requests no homes in this development are allowed to be occupied until 2021. Commercial use of the property to the south, there was some, quite a bit of discussion at the last hearing on this. While the proposed development is consistent with the future land use map designation of medium-density residential, as far as the use and density is concerned, the comp plan includes goals to proactively address conflicts between incompatible uses. Because it was a desire of the commission with a previous development application on the commercial CC zone property and mixed-use community designated parcel to the south, to have the two properties develop uniformly to ensure mix and integration of uses, staff included a recommendation in the staff report for the commission to determine if the proposed single-family development in itself provides an adequate transition to the mixed-use designated property to the south. No associated conditions of approval are recommended by staff, just to be clear on that. Regional pathway, a 10-foot wide multi-use pathway with landscaping is depicted on the revised landscape plan in the common area along the northern boundary of the site, as recommended by staff, and you can see that here on the plan on your right. If the pathway is constructed with landscaping as proposed, the common area will count towards the minimum open space standards in the UDC. Planning staff and Parks Department approves of the applicant's proposal. They are planning to extend that pathway to the northwest, to the sidewalk along Linder Road on the adjacent school property, and from what I understand, the school district is in agreement on that. If not, the applicant would be required to extend it on their property out to Linder Road. In regard to condition number A1C, the color scheme requirement, the applicant requests this condition is deleted. Staff does not recommend deletion of this requirement as discussed previously. Condition A1D, the eve requirement, applicant requests this condition is deleted. Again, staff does not recommend deletion of this requirement as previously discussed. In regard to conditions number A2A, A2B, A3C, and A3D, the applicant requests these conditions are deleted and replaced with a modified condition, A1E. Staff recommends that, in regard to A2A, staff agrees with the request and has deleted the condition in the staff report based on the revised plan. A2B, staff recommends this condition remain due to SEPTED strategies that reduce the opportunity for crime through design, locating the pathway in common area behind the building lots in the area not visible from the public street or public areas, not supported by planning staff or the police department. I'll just remind you, that was this little pathway here along the east boundary of the site that comes off the common driveway and goes back here behind building lots. Condition number A3C, staff agrees with the request and has deleted this condition in the updated staff report based on the revised plan. A3D, staff recommends this condition remain due to SEPTED strategies, that's the one we just discussed. And A1E, staff recommends modification per the staff report, and I'll just go ahead and read the proposed modification. 10-foot wide multi-use pathway within a 14-foot wide public use easement with a minimum five-foot wide landscape strip on each side of the pathway, landscape per the standards in UDC 11, 3B, 12C, shall be provided along the north side of the Coleman lateral outside of the irrigation district's easement. The pathway shall extend from the east boundary of the site to the sidewalk along North Linder Road. And staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for staff? This time, would the applicant like to come forward? Heath, how are you, sir?
Good.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
You bet. Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street, with the law firm of Clark Ordle representing the applicant. Good to be back. Just as a reminder, and I'll try to go briefly, because I think some of this is going to cover some of the same ground that Sonia covered, but just to confirm that we're on the same page on several of these items. Just as a reminder, this is a medium-density development. It used to can Linder, 92 building lots. It's a high-quality, low-maintenance product for empty nesters in small families. As I mentioned at the last hearing, no code waivers are being requested, no variances, and it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So let's just jump right into the issues that we wanted to talk about at the last meeting. As Sonia mentioned, parking was something that was discussed, whether it was inadequate. We exceed the code with four onsite parking spots per lot, 50 on-street. We did discuss that with Chief Bonjorno and Sonia and Bill, and there is sign-off on the parking. There was some discussion about secondary fire access at the last meeting. Again, we were at that, in agreement at that point, that we would have a lot limitation until such time as we had our secondary access. We did discuss with staff and showed them that Lot 22, Block 2, which is shown with the red arrow here, would be our temporary access in the event that access is not provided to the south in a timely manner. Now, this is one that Sonia did mention just now. This is the relocation of the pathway access, and I've pointed you to where we currently show that. Staff is asking for that to move, I think, between either 18 and 19, or 17 and 18, if I remember right. The location we have it right now is identified at our neighbor's request, asking, they were asking for a buffer. With that, I will say that this is just not a hill that we, you know, plan to die on, so we would ask the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, to keep our neighbor's request in mind when you look at that condition of approval, but we'll leave that to your discretion. Then finally, on the list of resolved issues, we have secondary fire access. Let's see, wrong one. Did not move. There we go. We had the regional pathway. And that, I think, was the biggest issue at the last hearing, and luckily, that's been resolved. We've worked with the irrigation district. They are willing to allow for that drainage to be covered up, and so that makes all of this pretty easy on the pathway side, so we're happy to report that that's addressed. So, in terms of points of discussion, we'll start with the transition to the property on the south, then we'll talk about school capacity, and then we'll end with the additional design standards that staff is talking about. I think those are really the only items that are, that are at issue. So with regard to the transition to the property of the south, this is something I should have pointed out at the last hearing, and so sometimes it's nice to have an extra bite at the apple. Not only is commercial development possible with that property at the south, but the site does have an approved plan with commercial uses. In other words, there's a path forward. It has an approval. Now, we've been told that we need to respect the existing land use map and comp plan. Everyone's been very clear that that's been high on the list for Meridian over the last several years. The uses that are proposed on the land use map have not changed, even with the last map amendment, but I also wanted to show the larger context, and you can see that there on the north. As you know, the city typically plans for these mixed-use nodes at the mid-mile. So we took a look, and over there, there is still 30 acres of commercially-zoned property in that location. So, the way I would put it is that our property doesn't foreclose commercial use at this location. There is an existing approval for, for a commercial use at that location, and even if it did, there's 30 acres of CC-zoned property there at the mid-mile. And I do want to make a couple other points on that. Both our neighbor to the south and ACHD have approved the stub location into the property on the south. Our neighbor has no objection to our plan. They've looked at the transition, which provides for a dense, fairly narrow product next to the boundary. It's at about 10 units to the acre in that, along that boundary. We do believe that those 11 units provide a good transition. If you were to switch it over to multifamily, for example, what you'd probably see is something like two fourplexes with a big gap for parking, and you'd also have to have a conditional use permit in order to make that happen. So, in sum, we understand the transition. In this case, we think it's hard to argue that there should be a change to the comprehensive planning, and we, and we don't see that this has caused commercial to be impossible, and we have discussed it with the neighbor, and we think that, that all of those concerns have been addressed. Okay, so let's talk about schools. As we discussed at the last hearing, there is capacity in the district, and as Sonia mentioned, since then, we've clarified with the district that Oaihe High School and Pleasant View Elementary will both be online before our residents would enter the school system. And we believe that that addresses the, the issues involving capacity. But I do want to talk about this in greater detail, because it's come up a number of times, and just a couple additional thoughts on this. The city, of course, has a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan plans for growth in Meridian. The property, this property in particular, is planned to be part of that growth. It's been planned for medium-density residential for quite some time. The school district is also planning for growth, and those growth plans are reflected in the bond timelines that are shown in the West Ada School District's facility plan, which extends to 2028. So those two planning efforts have to work hand in hand. The plant, the city's planning for growth, the school district is planning to match that growth. Of course, there's going to be times when that capacity is stretched, but this application shows that the process is working. Again, Oaihe High School and Pleasant View Elementary will be online before our residents would make use of those schools. So I think this issue is addressed, but I do want to address the question of whether there should be a condition of approval preventing occupancy before a certain timeframe. Again, it's not required by the timing. You know, from a practical perspective, we won't have folks moving in that have students before end of May 2021, which would be the, the timeframe that we're talking about here. I don't think it's a precedent that this board should set. I think any date that you pick, whether it's April 1st, or May 1st, or July 15th, or July 31st, is going to essentially be arbitrary. But I also think it has additional policy implications that should be considered, because you'd be ceding your land use authority to the school district, which would then control the timing of these projects. It would also allow something like an effective moratorium that, and as you know, the city has a process that it has to follow if the city's going to stop development for any, for any reason. So the long and the short is, we won't have residents using schools until after those schools are online, and the planning is done what it's supposed to do. You know, this is infill, it's next to an existing middle school, that's, and this property's long been planned for residential development, and we think a timing condition on top of that is both unnecessary and has unwarranted implications. Okay, and now here's the last one, this is probably the most fun. That was tongue-in-cheek, guys. So, we want to talk about what I'm calling uncodified design standards. As you know, design reviews are required for duplex dwellings, there's, or, and there is no design review in the code for the detached single-family. Sonia is correct that you can impose additional standards with a development agreement, but there still should be a nexus, and it shouldn't be arbitrarily imposed. So, let's talk about eaves. This builder, Black Rock, does install eaves on the front and back of their homes. I want to be clear about that first. Those eaves wrap typically around the front, at least four feet. They also include eaves on street-facing sides where it makes sense architecturally. So we're really talking about the sides of the buildings and not all of the sides, even at that. So the staff condition imposes an across-the-board one-foot eve requirement on all homes, quote, "for aesthetic as well as drainage reasons." To be clear, there is not a drainage problem without eaves. The International Building Code does not require them. Drainage is addressed by fine grading down at the foundation. Water doesn't fall straight down. Water will go on the walls of, of any home. If you want to keep water off the walls and entirely away from the foundations, you're going to need significantly more than a one-foot eve. It's tongue-in-cheek, but you could keep water in walls, water off the walls and the foundation if you did a snow globe bubble, like in the Geico commercial, which I'm showing here at the top, but a one-foot eve isn't going to do that. Eaves are not required for drainage. Again, they'd be required by code if they were. So this has to be about aesthetics, but those are in the eye of the beholder. The UDC does not have a standard that requires eaves. There are many housing styles that don't include eaves. You can have Cape Cod, you can have southwestern adobe. So, let's not micromanage the process. This is what the product looks like. It sells like crazy. We can't build them fast enough, and they are 100% within code. You know, the product includes the eaves on the front, back, and otherwise were appropriate, and we should leave it at that and not make this subject to a subjective design decision. The color requirement is similar. Again, the UDC does an imposed design review for detached single-family product. Black Rock knows how to build it. They don't need to have those details dictated to them. And if this is going to be imposed, I think we should ask ourselves a couple of questions. You know, from a practical, so call it a bureaucratic, bureaucratic perspective, what additional delay is that going to add to the process? For example, is it in addition on the building permit checklist? But more importantly, we'd ask whether this requirement is being imposed on all single-family development. If the answer is yes, then why isn't it in code? And the answer, if the answer is no, then why is it being imposed only on this developer? Again, there's not a UDC requirement here. These are subjective decisions. They create additional administrative burdens. They're unnecessary, and we'd ask that they not be part of, of your recommendation to council. So just to sum, you have before your, you have before you a project with 92 residential lots and no opposition. The biggest question should be, does this meet code? If it does, it should be approved without these additional uncodified requirements. And just to be clear, the, the items before you are what we are asking to modify. We have reviewed the language in A1E, which was, had to deal with the, the regional pathway, and we're fine with staff's language there. So in summary, we would be asking for you to delete A1C, which is the color scheme requirement, and A1D, which is the eve requirement, and then A2B and A3D, which is the relocation of the open space access. We would leave that to, to your discretion. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for applicant? Commissioner Seal.
One of the things I, I mean, I want to bring up on the school requirement, I mean, when somebody talks in school calendar years, I mean, when I'm looking at this, saying 2021, I'm thinking June. That's the end of a school year, the beginning of the school year isn't until the following, you know, fall of that year. So when, when I'm thinking 2021, June is what comes to mind for me. So I mean, if we were to make that specific, that's what I would make it specific for. That way, the calendar school year has time to close out any new school. Construction's going to happen in that time. So, I heard you say May. I mean, it, it's hard to put your finger on what we can do for the schools, but I know is, I mean, planning and zoning and city council, we all have to work with the different organizations that are in the valley here. I can tell you that the schools are having issues, because they are all overcrowded. So, you know, and I realize that you guys don't have a lot of students that this is going to cause to load into the schools. That said, at some point in time, we got to start holding back a little bit. I wouldn't call it a moratorium, but at the same time, you got to call it what it is. If there isn't a desk for a student to sit at, there isn't a desk for the student to sit at, and then the school has to shoulder that burden, and we put that on, on them, not the other way around. So, they're being a good neighbor, they're letting us know what's going on, they're letting us know that they are keeping up, but they are a little behind by it right now, and they could use some help. So I just wanted to make sure that, I elaborated on my thoughts on that. The temporary access, is that going to be fully paved and up to code as far as what the fire department wants? Because there are requirements that the fire department needs to be met in order to provide that secondary access.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Seal, yes, it will be, it will meet emergency service standards.
On the eaves, I noticed on the pictures that you provided, that there is full-length gutter on almost everything that, where an eve would go, almost. Is, is that something that is standard in your design, is that they have full-length gutter front and back?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Seal, they are always on the front, not necessarily on the sides.
Not on the sides, I mean, the sides generally don't have, but on the, are they front and back of the house, or just front?
I believe it's also on the back.
And they are full-length?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
Would you mind flipping back to the, the plat that you've got on there?
Sure.
Just wanted to clarify one more thing. I know we talked about this last time. So all of the red are your single-family, and all of the beige are your duplex, or the other way around?
Commissioner Holland, the distinction there is single-story versus two-story. So the, the pink lots are single-story, the yellowish lots are potentially two-story.
And then what percentage of the development would be duplex-style versus single-family?
Yellow? Yellow, okay. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holland, so 90% of the single-story product would be duplex.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I did want to address something that Commissioner Seal had said about the schools. Now, the point I was trying to make, and maybe I didn't make it very well, was that selecting any date, whether it be May, June, July, is necessarily arbitrary, but it has a huge implication on someone's construction schedule, their interest carry, all those sorts of things. What we're talking about in this case is a project that will not have residents before May of 2021, which is really when the cutoff would be, because then you'd have the next school year, by the time they get there, they would be ready. So my point is that a, a condition on timing is unnecessary as a result of that, and that if you, and my suggestion to the Planning and Zoning Commission is that the more you go down that road, the more kind of troublesome aspects that, that tends to raise. So, it's a little like a court, you know, when they're, when they're making a decision, they could make it on a number of different bases, but they, they will not make a decision on something that isn't necessary to the outcome. And in this case, I look at it similarly, would, given the timing, we won't have anybody there by May 2021, so a condition is unnecessary.
So I'll comment on that. Sonia, can you flip back to the school? So I, I agree with you. I don't think the school should be dictating timing. I think that's, we're giving up our ability to make good decisions about how to grow, and I think we need rooftops before some of that stuff comes. That being said, when you guys are using, and can you flip to the next one where the school's pictures are? When you guys are using this, I'm going to caution you, because the legislature can change this in about five seconds, and they have to vote every time that bond timeline has to come up. So you're talking about two giant entities that have to approve something, and/or the voting population has to come forward. So you guys are using this, I appreciate that, but be careful on how far you push this. And I agree completely, the word, the M-word should never be used up here, in my opinion, but that's, that's just how I feel. But I think, be careful how you use this, because I think there are two entities that are very instrumental in how this gets used, because that bonding timeline is just a shot in the dark. And there's legislation right now, out there right now, that would eliminate bonding completely. Levy bonds would go away, and that's a property tax issue. So I think we got to be careful about how we use it. So I, I think I'm talking on both sides of the issue. I agree with you on the timing thing, and then that's a rooftop issue more than this, but I think this is something I'd be careful on how you present this, because I think it can be a double-edged sword.
No, Mr. Chair, and that's, that's a fair point. No, Mr. Chair, and that's a fair point. My point was to say that we have two entities, the city and the school district, that are both trying to put plans in place for future growth.
Absolutely.
Not that anything that you see on this page is absolutely in concrete.
Additional comments or questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that has signed up to testify? As I get, I'll let you answer first.
Mr. Chair, I don't show anyone signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to testify in something new? And we're going to sequester this to the issues that have come up in that conversation this evening.
Very brief.
Yep, thank you.
Justin Cranny, Holly Troxville, 877 Main Street. I would have signed up if they don't work. It wasn't a slot to sign up, so I raised my hand. It was set up for something, another project, another, other projects that didn't have availability. Simply put, I represent the Lester and Betty Vogel Trust, the owners of the property that is under consideration of this application. Simply put, as Heath said, the owners have long planned for this property developed residentially. They've watched the growth and the change in the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, and are fine with that, and would recommend that this be sent to City Council for approval, and I'll leave it at that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sir, gentleman in the back. Again, please keep your comments to the issues we brought up tonight and not on the general overview of the project.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dennis Green, and I live in the BlackRock subdivision, Verado, off of Eustick and Eagle. Okay? I had a whole list of reasons why I came here in support of this new Eddington development, but I will restrict my comments as per your instructions.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, I want to say that in Verado, very similar development, parking has not been an issue. In my opinion, it's never been an issue. Across the street from my house, we have parking for probably a half a dozen different vehicles. And then the parallel streets to my street, Sharptail, probably could support 20 or 30 different cars. Between each of the houses, there's space for additional parking. So, I guess, I guess the plus of it, if you have too much parking, is probably a bigger problem than having not enough, because you're going to encourage people to bring home their work trailers, their RVs, their boats, other kinds of vehicles that may or may not work, and it really affects the value of our homes and our community. I really support BlackRock and our HOA for maintaining this standard, because two years I've lived there, and all I'm experiencing now is an increased value in my property. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir, very much. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Okay.
I am in favor of this.
Ma'am, please state your name and your address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My name's Tina Folden. I live at 2241 East Camay Drive in Verado Sub and Meridian, and it's my understanding that Eddington Commons will offer similar housing as Verado, and that's something I do support. I just passed my one-year anniversary, and I love my home. For me, living here gets better every day. It sounds like a question about parking has come up, and I want to share that I have not experienced a single issue with parking. Before I bought, I looked around at several of the communities, but chose Verado because of the location and orderly, uniform way in which the homes are designed. Yes, they're close, but I never used the side yard, so that doesn't matter. And the fact that they're close does not allow for accumulation of junk that I saw in other neighborhoods. I chose BlackRock and Verado because of the quality and home and location, quality of the home and location. The CCNRs are in Forest, and I believe that this neighborhood concept works. Point is, I knew the parking situation before I bought and actually appreciate the fact that people cannot park extra cars, so it doesn't clutter up the streets anymore. So, that was positive. Thank you for your consideration and support of these types of neighborhoods.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Anyone additional who would like to testify in this application? Heath, would you like to come back up and close, please?
Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise. I have nothing further unless there are additional questions from the commission. I do have a hard copy of the slide with our proposed changes, if that's helpful for you.
Love that. If you can give it to the clerk, that's awesome. Is there any questions?
Heath, on the eaves and the colors.
Yep.
Are you taking the approach that you are standing pretty firm on where you're at?
Commissioner Castanelli, yes, we're asking for that to be removed from the recommendation moving forward to council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
One follow-up question. This may be for staff first, but does our code require design review for the attached product already?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holland, yes, it does require design review for single-family attached, and then it also allows for that to apply to single-family detached when a development agreement is required, as I previously mentioned.
So, I guess my question to you, Mr. Clark, is if 90% of the single-story product is going to be duplex-related and required to do the design review, then you've probably got about 40 to 50% of the rest of your project that's going to be required to do design review, if that's what we follow staff recommendations to do. So, would there really be a delay in timing if it's still going through for the other part of the product, is what I'm wondering?
Commissioner Holland, I, you know, I don't know exactly what the delay would look like, because I don't know what the process is. You know, to Sonia's point, you can agree and put in whatever you want in a development agreement. You could agree that every garage should have a rainbow painted on it or whatever. I mean, you can, a development agreement's wide open.
I was saying, are we agreeing to that right now?
Yeah, I just put that on the table. So, you know, from that perspective, yes, you can do what you want in a development agreement, but what we're suggesting is that more than half of our product would then be subject to a design review requirement that all other single-family detached in the city is not subject to. And so, that's why we're asking for this. I kind of look at it as, in addition, that it's sort of a slippery slope. Where does the additional regulation end that's not based in code?
And I think, and I don't want to speak for staff, but my guess is that the reason they've requested to have the ability to do design review on the entire project is because half of it's duplex-style in nature, and they're going to have to do the design review anyway. Does that all typically take place at the same time when you're doing a design review? If there's the single-family versus, or the attached product and the two stories, would that all take place at the same time?
Chairman, Commissioner Holland, I believe our sta, I, sorry, I don't personally review those. I believe our staff is just reviewing the building permits and signing off on them individually.
Yeah, thank you. That helps.
Yeah, Commissioner Holland.
And the main reason on this one is for consistency in the overall development.
And Commissioner Holland, that was the point I was going to make, is that it is per building permit. It's not a batch kind of analysis. And of course, we're going to have a coherent-looking product. We've got millions of dollars invested in it. It has to, it has to look good. So, that's, that's not something that needs to be micromanaged by the city.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
So, I'm going to throw it out there, because I, because I know where Commissioner Castanelli's comment came from. So, if you guys are required to put the, put eaves on this, I mean, I think it's a conversation that we've heard from others. That's where I think it's coming from. I don't want to speculate, but I think the city's heard that, that there's concerns over that design. So, as we're trying to work through this, maybe that's a city council decision, but we're trying to do our best to do what we're hearing. There may be challenges there. All right? So, I'm just passing that along, but I know there's, that we've heard concerns. So, I just want to share.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Without additional questions, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, unless we have staff questions?
Mr. Chair, I move we close the public hearing for Eddington Commons, H-2019-0109.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing on H-2019-00... What is it?
0109.
0109, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same? Motion passes. Thank you. The application is properly before you. Mission, do you have initial thoughts or takes or comments you would like to make?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I'm going to kick us off with one of the questions that staff had proposed to us about the adequate transition piece. I know I'm mixed and shared my thoughts about that last time we met, but I think the challenge was with the small parcel that was to the south, we saw an alternative proposal come before us not that long ago that didn't tend to work well, because there wasn't enough room for access in and out. They were only allowed the one access point, and they were right in, right outs. So, my fear is that if you look at this from a regional perspective, we're still kind of inhibiting what will end up going there. Not to say that it can't be commercial or the plat that was originally planned for it, but my guess is that eventually someone will come back to us and say, we've tried everything else, we're going to put storage units here again, and that seems to happen a lot. So, just throwing that comment out there. I would also go on the record to say, I like this concept in general. I think the development is well laid out. I think traffic flow makes sense to me. You know, with the size of the lots, the style of the product, I know they build a nice house that sells quickly. I like where the park is, that they're going to have it fenced, because it makes it safer for kids on that corner, because that was one of our concerns. I like the new addition of the pathway. I know we have a few things to talk about related to that and some of the staff requests there, but in general, I like the development. I just, I struggle with the regional concept of where it's located and how it transitions to neighboring properties. I'm going to open it up there.
Thank you. Commissioner McCarville? You took your button. You pushed your button, so I was making, oh, you're not, okay, sorry, I didn't want to jump in there.
Background in general. I will say that is still my concern as well, because I just know that corner, I agree with Commissioner Holland, it's going to come back to us later and say, now this is the only thing we can put there, is storage units because of the access. But, yeah, I agree. I think the house sells well. I would, design-wise and as personal preference, and I like the eaves on all sides. I think it'd make a more finished look product, but it's certainly, I think if it's not, it's not code, I don't think we can just apply that randomly. And the other one I felt like I wanted to comment on was the placement of that lot, of the common lot. I agree, probably shouldn't be back there along the fence. I think it's, you're just asking for trouble back there. I know it may seem like a nice buffer, but I think you're going to end up with unintended things back there that are worse than just having a house there.
Additional comments? Commissioner Seale.
I agree with the eaves and knowing that they had, they do the full-length gutter. I mean, that aesthetically is more pleasing to me than when you see the houses kind of chopped up and they do the little 10-foot thing over the back. You know, I think that that's, lends itself to be, being more aesthetically pleasing architecturally. There's nothing in the code that says that they have to have the eaves. I prefer that, but again, you know, the houses are close enough on some of them, you can jump from house to house, so without the eaves on there, it provides a little space. I don't feel that that's something that we can necessarily try to enforce. The design review, I understand why they're asking for it, and if that's something that staff is recommending, and I think they understand more than anybody that if that will or will not increase somebody's workload within the staff, so I would tend to agree with them on that. If that's something that they want to have in there, then I fully support them on that. On relocating Lot 21, Block 1, I have some mixed emotions on that one, and I do agree that having it back there right now, especially it being located really close to a school, probably a really bad idea. Future use, if there was something that was slotted to go in next door right now and they could show that, then maybe that would be something that would be of value, but at this point in time, I think that it's probably a bad idea to have it right behind that house or in that, in that area. So, moving it would be a good idea. As far as the schools, I still stand on that. To me, I mean, I'd like to say that we trust everything that's ever been said by anybody that's ever testified here. That said, if the school is asking that we not have any students come out of there till 2021, I think it's something that we can pass along. Again, I don't think it's, I don't think they're dictating it to us. They're giving us a choice. We don't have to put it in there. That said, if we do, we're being good neighbors. I mean, I don't want them dictating or setting a precedence where they feel as though they can dictate. I want them to understand that that's something that's a choice, and we understand that they're overcrowded, and if we can help them alleviate some of that burden, I think that's in our, all of our best interest. I think I've covered all of the points.
So, I'm going to comment, I, because I, because I said something to Heath, I'll say, I have a difficult time. I understand that the schools are overcrowded, and there's challenges there. I have a very difficult time with them dictating timing. It is extremely expensive and extremely, time is, for a developer is money. I mean, that is a huge deal, and I have a really difficult time with the school district being able to dictate that. So, and I, and the word moratorium for me is a no-go for us. The planning, I mean, if council wants to say that sometime down the road, or the mayor wants to say that, that's their job. That's not our job. I think the M-word shouldn't be in our vocabulary, because we're here to help, you know, dict, or to help developments get to the process, not choose policy. And I think that's what the school district's doing as well, and so I have a very difficult time with that. I have no problem with them reporting to us, giving us great information, and I want them to come and talk to us as much as possible. Them dictating timing doesn't, it kind of rubs me the wrong way. So, that one is an interesting one to me. Walking through the neighborhood, I think, I'm in agreement with you guys on the pathway. I think that's a challenging spot right now. It's interesting on the, on the project to the south, I know we've asked, and we, because we've all thought about, thought through this 14 different ways from Sunday, I did appreciate the regional view on what's out there commercially, that's, and we have to take application by application, so I'm having a struggle there. I, and I don't want another storage unit across the street from it. We have a storage unit across the street from this now, so we have to find a balance. Maybe I'll stop there for a minute, see if anyone else has any thoughts.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Holland.
I know I served on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, along with a number of folks, but some of the conversations we had too were around where those regional centers made sense. There was a lot of interest for more being on the hard corners, because that's where a lot of development likes to be. Gas stations like to be on the hard corners. Some of those drive-in, retail uses like to be on the hard corners. I think there's still a place for more commercial, certainly, to be available within a half-mile to a mile of the site. I'm not, I'm not second-guessing that, but I know we still have, the conversation we had last time was that the regional overlay that was down on the corner to the piece of the property south of this could be carried forward to include this and not be required as a comprehensive map amendment change. So, they have the ability to come back if they wanted to, take out a few of these residential lots and put in a little bit more commercial and make a better access point. I know they could consider that, but same reason you just said, time is money to developers, and going back would be completely changing their plan at this point, and that's certainly difficult to look at. I'm going to get off of that for a minute and just go through the rest of the comments for the different things that were asked of us, but for eaves, I think I agree with the comments made over here. Aesthetically, I like eaves on all sides, because I think it looks nicer product, but when you've got homes that are a little bit closer together, I don't see the need for us to require it if it's not required in building code either. So, I'm amenable to their request to remove that condition. Color schemes, that's where I was trying to get to with my questions to Sonia, is if they're all together or if they're individual. I can see where there would be some frustration if they had to do that for the single-family detached homes, if they, if no one else has to do that in other developments. I'm... I'm kind of 50/50 on that. I tend to agree with what staff recommends for what their process is, and if their building department has an easy process for design review, I don't know that it would be too much of an extra burden for them to do the design review just to make sure it's a consistent neighborhood, but certainly understand their point, so I could go either way on that. On the schools, I also agree it's really hard to put a timeline on development. I would say by the time these are all constructed and occupied, it probably will be 2021 anyway. Maybe earlier 2021, but...
Yeah.
Let's see. Regional pathway, I think I would stick with staff advising on that. And I think I would leave the other conditions that staff recommended on A3, B and A3D. That's what I've got.
Excuse me, Chairman. May I make a comment, please?
Absolutely.
Just information, extra information for the commission. If the commission decides that eaves should not be a requirement or color schemes should not be a requirement, I would recommend removal of the designer view requirement on the single-family detached structures because that was the main reason for that. So if that's the direction you do go, the staff would just recommend removal of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the guidance.
I guess it's my turn, huh, Evan?
Commissioner Castanelli.
I stood by quietly. In everything we do, our, to me, our role up here is to, is to review these projects and make decisions that we feel are the best for the city overall. So that's, that's what I'm trying to look at, look at this, and everything that comes before us. That said, I'll hit the school issue right off the top. I don't necessarily like them dictating us necessarily either, but we're, citywide, we're so far out in front of our infrastructure when it comes to roads, schools, just about everything, that, I mean, schools are way overcrowded, just, I mean, let's look, I mean, look at the numbers, it's ridiculous. Traffic, it's insane. And, you know, we have to, we depend on West Ada for schools, we depend on ACHD for the roads. All those things are out of our, out of the city's control. You know, not much we can, we can do about that now. So I, timing, I think that will work out. I think everything else on this list, I'm going to, I want to stick hard and fast to staff's recommendation on everything, from the design review and the eaves and the color schemes to the lot location. One, that, the common area, it is what it is because it's the way it's laid out, but that whole common area with the pathway to me is, in my opinion, it's, it's almost, it's almost worthless in this development. It's hidden behind two-story homes across the board, and the only way in and out right now that the, to access that, you have to go down a private driveway, that common driveway down there at the end, and go around to the end. It need, there needs to be more open access to open that up, to make that so that people can see that. Otherwise, it's, it's, three-quarters of the open space is hidden from the entire development. When you get inside that, that's my, so I'm, from a, just from aesthetics, from a usability standpoint, let alone the issue that has been discussed with the crime, I think that lot needs to be where staff recommends it. And I think that, that pretty much covers a lot of that. So I, I'm going to stick hard and fast to what staff recommends from, from top to bottom. From the regional standpoint, the negative that I see there is when something does develop out of there, as, as we've talked about, if you want to make a left turn onto Linder, coming out of that corner piece that we're not looking at right now, they're going to go through, they're going to go through this subdivision. So it's going to, whatever, whatever gets hammered out down there eventually, it's going to drive that traffic through here. So, you know, that was, that was, that was a big point that we talked about last time and the, and the, and the street wits and all that. Fire department's okay with it. You know, and it sounds like that one's dealt with, I suppose, but I think it is, it's going to be a concern. It's going to be an issue down the road. There's really little we can do about that here, I think. I mean, if, you know, the approval is there for the, for the, the street wits, I just don't think it's, by the time you add that corner piece down below, because traffic will be going out through there. There's no question about that. Anyway, that's, that's all I have to say is just that I'm, personally, I'm going to stick hard and fast to staff's recommendation on every single item.
Can I ask a quick question of the crew, I think, or just throw out an idea? So we know that, obviously, we have the family representative who owns this property, and we've thought about floating the project. It has an approval on it, which is hard for me. Floating that to the north, which we talked about, and then you have a vacant lot with a house way back in the back to the east. And so we're not asking them to float it that way. I mean, there's, it's not like it couldn't develop another way in the future. And that's where I'm having, I thought through this because I knew it was coming back, and there is, there's vacant land to the, to the east of us, or to the east of this property. And so you could go put an assemblage together of those two pieces of property, and now that gentleman came in and said he was approving, or he was supportive of this project, that gives me a little bit of pause, too. So I, I'm, so I can go assemble a part of his property in the front edge and then take his access off of Ustick. So we're getting focused on one access, which I know is an issue because we have, that's what is in front of us, but there is other vacant land around us that could be a discussion for the future. So as we're talking about floating comp plan maps around, that's another option as we throw it out there. Does that have any impact on anybody's thought process in this thing? Because I, because we are talking about two separate pieces of property, two separate applications or potential applications, so just throwing it out there.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I think it's certainly a good point to keep in consideration. I think the challenge we'll have is that they're yellow on the future use map, so when there's a developer that does end up going and buying that piece, they're not going to think about floating the designation, same as this application. They're going to come in with a medium-density product and say, it says medium-density on the future use map and we didn't know we could float it, we don't want to float it. So I see your point, but I don't know that we can float it unless we ask council to consider changing that on the map.
Fair.
And that may be a longer process than we'd like to do.
Yes. Additional thoughts?
Mr. Chair, one other comment, too, on the school district piece. I know we've, we've kind of hammered that quite a bit, but looking at the specific product type, I don't really see a huge concern because it's not...
That was my other point.
It's not a big family complex. It's not going to be a place where you're going to have six and seven children in each household. It's probably going to be one or two kids if you do. It's, they're smaller footprint size.
I think they're taking the heat for some of the bigger neighborhoods that have been built around them.
It's only 90 homes, so...
Yeah. Thoughts? Any additional talk-through we need to do? We want to break it up into pieces.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I think we're just down to the, to the eaves. I mean, that's, I don't know. And again, I mean, you know, I'll beat the dead horse a little more on the schools, but I would rather give somebody the opportunity to know that they can't do something other than the school board tell us they're overcrowded and that be my decision. Because if they come back and say we're overcrowded, I vote no. Period. So, because, you know, and I sympathize for developers and builders where time is money, but at the same time, every time we have to haul, you know, one of these little micro facilities into a school or hire more teachers or figure out where these kids are going to go, the burden then goes on them. And in our community, we as taxpayers have to deal with that. As individuals, we have to deal with that. So the rest of it, I do feel that the staff has justified in their recommendations. I think it's well thought out. I do think that the applicant has done a lot of work and I much appreciate the work that's been done in order to, you know, basically comply with staff's requests. The, you know, again, the eaves, I just don't think that's something that we can enforce or that we should try to enforce at this point in time. That might be up for a larger discussion above where we're at right now to put that into code.
Well, that's, I think, I totally agree with what you're saying. I think if, if city council wants to have a conversation about whether they want to require eaves in everywhere, that's a policy discussion they need to have, and it's hard for us to make that determination for them at this point. I think we're trying to deal with what's in code, but, so I agree with you. Commissioner Holland's thinking. Commissioner McCarville, do you have any additional thoughts, ma'am?
I would, I'm always in favor of supporting staff in most, all their recommendations, but I do, I just agree with the, the eaves personally, I would, I mean, when I first read through this, I was like, yes, the eaves stay, that stays. Because I had made notes all the way down on all these little comments, but in hearing all the testimony and stuff tonight, I do, I agree that it's just something, if it's not in the code, then it's, it's not up to us to randomly enforce that. It needs to be changed, like you said, higher, in a different place other than this commission. And I think, quite honestly, with the schools, I think we're splitting hairs because in all reality, I mean, the school's asking us not until 2021, and there's, there's just, realistically, there's no way this is, these homes are going to be occupied much before that anyway. I mean, you could be talking a couple of months, but I just don't, I think the number of children that would be in this development prior to 2021 is negligible as far as other stuff we've seen. I think if it was a huge, huge project that would have a bigger impact on the schools, then I think it would warrant more discussion and fine-tuning. But I think it's kind of a moot point one way or the other. I mean...
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
So what I've heard from people is that they're okay removing the condition about eaves because it's not required in building code. Color schemes, do we want that to remain for the single-family detached homes, or are we okay with removing the condition of designer view for the single-family homes?
I think based on what staff guidance, I mean, I know we have Commissioner Castanelli's thought that he's pretty hard and fast where he is, so we know where that is.
I'm real hard and fast on the, on the eaves and supporting staff on that condition. The colors, you're not going to add eaves at two years down the road, but somebody may move in and paint their house the day after they move in. Paint's flexible. But the eaves aren't, and I, that's why I'm, I'm supporting staff on their, on their position there. And I seem to be the odd man out, so I know I'm going to stand on any, I won't, I'm not going to make a motion because I know what will happen to that, but I know how I'll vote on any motion made. I'll just say that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCarville.
I guess my thought, I mean, I guess what I heard tonight is these, it's the same product that's already built pretty much next door, and I just, I don't know how we can enforce that these homes have eaves when the product in the next subdivision doesn't. I mean...
I think that's, and again, I think it's a policy discussion that is above our...
I mean, I'm totally...
When you say next door, what, we're talking about subdivisions that are across town?
It's down, it's down Ustick, about a mile and a half or two miles.
Yeah, I'm with you. I, I think they look better. I think they're, I mean, there's functionality to it. I think it's a good idea to have them, but I just, I don't think it's with this body to...
It's something that council has to take up, because I think we've heard about it enough now, but it's not in code, so we're, and that's our job, is to make sure we're adhering to code and the comprehensive plan. But not being in code, we have a tough spot. We can require it under a DA, but you can require, as they said, they put rainbows on the houses, and, I mean, that's the challenge is...
Well, this is our recommendation to council.
Agreed.
So it still comes down to council, the council's decision on it.
And I think they're going to have to take a policy position on it, so...
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Castanelli, I mean, I would think that we could recommend striking that with some kind of verbiage in there that it needs larger review. I mean, would that be something that you're amenable to? Because I do agree that if we go down the road of trying to enforce something that's not code, then we open ourselves up for all kinds of things that could happen down the road, where I think it is something that needs to be brought up and the city council needs to take forward or pass, you know, further back down to staff or committee in order to take action on it. That said, I would still want to recommend striking it.
I guess it still comes down, my, from my perspective, if we make the recommendation to approve based on staff's conditions, then it still, it still falls in council's lap to, to strike that or keep it, because council can strike it. That's, then it comes down, it's to them.
Hopefully, they'll read our minutes, and I would guess they're going to get the full ear of our thought process that this probably needs additional thought from them. I, at this point, though, I, I'm kind of, the challenge is I, we're recommending something that's not in code. That's my challenge, so, but I understand exactly where you are.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I'd be prepared to attempt a motion, but I would put in there the same consideration that staff requested of us, that there is a recommendation in our deliberation for the council to determine if the proposed single-family development provides an adequate transition, so that they would have that conversation.
I have no problem with that. Commissioner Seal, do you have...
That's already in the staff recommendation, though.
I just would emphasize it.
Now you're throwing me off for me making a motion, so...
Say, I'm happy to attempt one, but...
Go, go ahead.
Go forth, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Chair. I would move, my little cheat sheet's missing, sorry. After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to city council of file number H-2019-0109 for Eddington Commons, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of January 16th, 2020, with the following modifications, that we would strike condition A1D requiring eaves, but the council would consider what policy should exist for other developments as a citywide nature. That we would also modify condition A1C related to color schemes with the removal of condition for designer view on single-family homes, unless council would like to re-activate that. And that for the council meeting, that they would deliberate on determining if the proposed single-family development in itself provides an adequate transition to the mixed-use designated parcel to the south, and what could be done about making sure that that commercial piece doesn't get blocked in.
Second?
Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland, may I clarify your motion?
Thank you.
You said no DR for single-family homes. Did you mean detached homes?
Correct, sorry, yes. No designer view for single-family detached homes.
Is the second, or...
Second.
Good, thank you. I have a motion and a second, any other comment? Commissioner McCarville, you had...
Did we, everything, I mean, do we need to...
Sonia, do you have everything you need? Everything else is still in place?
Everything is in place in this...
Excuse me, didn't have my mic on, on the relocation of the common lot on the east boundary.
Correct. We're in agreement with staff on the pathway and the relocation of the common lot.
Or did properly in the staff report that we don't have to address it in the month?
Yep.
Got it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
What, is, the issue with the schools, is that a staff recommendation or that's just comments in there from West Ada?
That's just...
Chairman, Commissioner Castanelli, that was a comment from West Ada School District. There is no staff condition on that.
So I have a motion and a second, any other additional comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye?
Nay.
Would you like to be recorded, sir?
Hmm?
Would you like to be recorded as nay?
I'm recorded as nay.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next application on our docket tonight is file number H-2019-0106, Shelburne South Subdivision, and Sonya, you are back on stage, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 27.9 acres of land. It's zoned RUT in Ada County, and it's located on the north side of East Amity Road, approximately a quarter mile west of South Cloverdale Road. Jason Land Use and Zoning to the north is future single-family residential properties in Shelburne East Subdivision, zoned R4 and R8. To the west are single-family rural residential agricultural properties, zoned RUT in Ada County. To the east are single-family residential agricultural properties in Boise's area of city impact. And to the south are single-family residential and ag properties and Amity Road, zoned RUT in Ada County. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation on this property is medium-density residential, which calls for three to eight dwelling units per acre. The applicant is requesting annexation of 29.01 acres of land with an R8 zoning district for the development of 99 single-family residential detached homes at a gross density of 3.55 units per acre, consistent with the medium-density residential future land use map designation. Single-family residential detached dwellings are principal permitted use in the R8 district. A preliminary plat is proposed, as shown, consisting of 99 building lots, 19 common lots, and one other lot on 27.9 acres of land in the R8 zoning district. The plat is proposed to develop in two phases, as shown. The proposed minimum lot size is 5,446 square feet with an average lot size of 6,994 square feet. One access is proposed by East Amity Road, and one local street access is proposed from the north, once Shelburne East subdivision is constructed. One stub street is proposed to the west, and two stub streets are proposed to the east for future extension and interconnectivity. Local street access is provided to the out parcel, the Bunch Kirkwood property at the south, excuse me, southern boundary of the site for future access upon redevelopment. That is this parcel right here, and it is not included in this plat. An access easement is required to be provided to the Williams property, and that is this property right back here. Access, an access easement is required to be provided across Lot 1, Block 4, and that is, where's my pointer, this lot right here, which currently has access via a private lane from the north. So the existing home on this property right here is proposed to remain, and then there's a single-family home on this property that would have an access to the public street. The pathway's master plan depicts a pathway along the east side of the 10-mile feeder canal at the northeast corner of the site, and that is in this location right here. Pathway is required on the east side of the canal. As this area is not accessible from this development without a pedestrian bridge and is at the east boundary of the city's area of impact, the Parks Department is not recommending a multi-use pathway is constructed at this time. However, a 14-foot-wide public pedestrian easement should be dedicated to allow the pathway to be constructed in the future if needed. Instead, staff and Parks Department is recommending a 10-foot-wide pathway is provided along the southwest side of the 9-mile creek, and that is the creek that bisects the site here from the east to the northwest boundary of the site for future extension and interconnectivity with adjacent neighborhoods and the future school site to the west. And then there is a future collector's street that's designated to be constructed right here, and then this is the future school site right here. A 35-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Amity Road. It is an entryway corridor. Mitigation is required for existing trees, four-inch caliper and greater in size that are removed from the site as determined by the city arborist. There are approximately 30 trees on the site that are proposed to be removed. A minimum of 10% qualified open space is required. That comes out to 2.79 acres of land. The proposed open space consists of half of the street buffer along Amity Road, centrally located linear open space along the creek, a large common area near the southeast corner of the site, and parkways which exceed UDC standards. A minimum of one qualified site amenity is required. The proposed amenities consist of a sports court, pickleball court, a picnic area with a 20-by-20 shade structure, picnic tables, and a bench which exceeds UDC standards. Conceptual building elevations, and, excuse me, this is a detail of the site amenities here that I was just speaking of. Conceptual building elevations were submitted that depict a variety of architectural styles for single-family residential detached homes planned for this development. They are consistent with that in previous phases of Shelburne subdivision to the north and northwest. Homes will range in size from 1,600 to 2,200 square feet, and a large percentage will be single-story. Written testimony has been received from Ann Kirkwood, David Palumbo, and the applicant in response to the staff report. Staff is recommending approval with the requirement of a development agreement per the provisions in the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thanks, Sonya. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Castanelli.
Actually.
Good? Additional questions? Thank you, ma'am. Would the applicant like to come forward? Thank you for being here. Please state your name and your address for the record, ma'am. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before I get started, do you have a, can you pull up my presentation?
Thanks, Sonya. Good evening, Debra Nelson with Givens Persley. My address is 601 West Bannock. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and developer team. Here with me tonight, I have Megan Smith with the developer, and also Ben Thomas with Civil Innovations. In case you've got any fact questions I can't answer, I may pull one of them up to help me. We appreciate Sonya's work on this and all of the city staff's review, and we appreciate the recommended approval. We've just got a couple of clarifications and requests for changes to the conditions of approval. We addressed this in our written response to the staff report, and I'll also go through that in detail tonight, so you can see where we've got requested changes. I don't need to spend much time on the overview of the project because Sonya has done a nice job with that. I would just highlight that this is a great location for annexation. It's, it's obviously contiguous to the city. The utilities are readily available. It's immediately adjacent to developed properties around us, including additional Shelburne developments that the city has approved and are under various stages of construction and occupancy, and, and that includes the original Shelburne that's to our northwest and the Shelburne East that's approved and will be, begin construction soon to our north. And so the city already has experience with this developer and the quality of homes and, and design of their layout that they bring. I don't think we need to go over this, the plat in detail, although I'd answer questions because Sonya's done a nice job with that. I just want to point out that we plan to begin Phase 1, the infrastructure, in the fall of 2020, and the construction of the homes in the spring or summer of 2021. Also want to point out that ACHD has reviewed and approved this development and noted that there are many areas that will be improved in the immediate vicinity of this project soon. Cloverdale to our east is scheduled to be widened to five lanes within the very next planning cycle, 21 to 25. So this is a funded improvement that will happen soon. Additionally, Amity Road is in the same period plan to be scheduled, to be widened to three lanes. And so we'll have significant roadway improvements available to serve this development. As Sonya's highlighted, there's significant landscaping and open space and amenities here well above what's required by the city code, and really a nice design that centrally ties in all of the development along this 9-mile creek and provides access to all of the homeowners. There are only, there's only one amenity that's required, but we're providing a sport court as well as a picnic area with a shelter, and we've also proposed improvements along 9-mile creek, and I'll discuss the extent of those improvements a little further in a minute. Oh, did I go backwards? There we go. And the building design and elevations, there will be a variety of homes. These will be very similar to the product, really a continuation and providing some continuity with the existing Shelburne approvals, which are, as I mentioned, just to the north and northwest of this. There'll be a mix of single and double-story homes, but the majority are single-level, really responding to current demand. The home sizes ranging from 1,600 to 3,000. The architectural style will be a mix of contemporary and modern farmhouse. So I just want to focus in on a few of these conditions of approval. We asked for some changes. First of all, on the fencing, we did ask for the opportunity to provide open vision lattice vinyl fencing along the common areas. That is consistent with the code and would provide some continuity with the fencings that will be provided around, along the development, both in our development and in the adjacent developments. And there's a staff condition that specified wrought iron in these locations, so we're asking for the opportunity to provide a different type of open fencing. On 9-mile creek, we proposed an open water feature, picture of which an example is shown here, and that was in our application materials. This just includes a lot of green space. It's a local amenity and really pretties up what is otherwise just an existing ditch and provides some nice open space. And we did provide, propose a five-foot path along a portion of this, really centrally located around our amenities. Staff has requested that we extend that five, that five-foot wide path all the way to the east and west sides of the development and widen it to 10 feet. The developers thought about that, and they, they are willing to extend it all the way to the east and west. That will provide the continuity that they want for future access to the school to, site to the west, but ask that it not have to be 10 feet wide. There's limited space here. What they ask for is to keep it a five-foot wide path and an eight-foot wide easement. That'll allow still some pretty green space, and a few of the additional reasons we'd ask you to consider that request from the developer is that this truly is a local amenity. It, other than potential future connection to the school site in the west, it doesn't go anywhere regionally. It's, it's actually piped past that to the north and the west. And so it's underground, it's not going to be a long regional connection, and then, of course, to our east, we've got the city of Boise and Cloverdale Road. So this, this is the end of it, and so we appreciate the, providing the continuity to our borders, we would do that, but to make it the size of a regional pathway when it really doesn't serve that purpose, we, we, we don't want to incur that expense or lose the green space. Contrary to that, what, and this, this isn't shown on your pathways plan, this isn't required or part of the city's pathways plan. But to the north of this, the 10-mile creek, which we just have a sliver of, that is the regional pathway that's designated, and that is going to connect to other developments. And so another reason not to provide a wide regional pathway-like amenity just to the south of where you actually do have that. Additional comments and requests? The Freeman parcel, Sonya touched on this, it's an existing home that's outside of the subdivision. They have, it's, the staff has requested that we provide an easement across our property, across one of our lots from South Solitaire Way, and we are perfectly happy to provide the 20-foot easement that's requested. We just asked for it to be in a slightly different location just north of this. We had arranged that with Mr. Freeman when we came in with Shelburne East, which was developed just to the north of this, and we are, the location was agreed on with him and the applicant. We will provide that 20-foot easement as part of Lot 1, Block 3 of the final plat for Shelburne East, which is just to the north, and that's the curved road that's drawn on the slide in that location. Oh, here we go. The staff has also asked us with respect to this common lot, Lot 1, Block 8, to designate this as unbuildable. That's the triangle piece, the kind of the remnant that's up here above the 10-mile feeder canal. We don't plan to put any houses there, so we don't have a concern with that designation as it goes for residential or other structures, but we would like to preserve the opportunity to improve this as a future park, should that be a valued amenity. It is adjacent to our Shelburne East just north of this, so it's not proposed at this time, because right now it doesn't really serve the, the subdivision that's before you, but we'd like to preserve the opportunity perhaps to put a dog park or some other appropriate amenity there. So we just want to make sure the unbuildable designation isn't restricting any future amenities or improvements along that canal. In conclusion, we think this is a great project. It's got great amenities and open space above what's required. It's a nice quality housing product that's in current demand, and we ask for you to recommend approval of what's before you as recommended by staff, but also as modified by Exhibit A to our written response to staff report. And I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. Questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Can, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Debra Nelson.
Debra, thank you. The, on this full plat map, can you point out the, with the cursor if you can, the Freeman property and where the, kind of, where the easement, where you want it and where it's, where staff has it depicted?
Yes, right, this is the Freeman parcel here. I think staff asked for it to be across the top at the, of this lot or anywhere, I guess you didn't specify, just 20-foot wide, across this lot, and we've asked for it to be just on the, the north side of that.
Does that, does that allow for full access with it?
Yes.
I see the lots right up under where it says propo, East, East Sub in that.
Yes, they currently have a driveway that comes down right here, if you can follow my cursor, that turns this corner, so they already have this easement provision right here on the corner of the lot that's on it, that's a part of this subdivision. And so rather than come straight down from the south, we propose to bring it over from Solitaire Way, and that's the agree, that's the location that we worked out with them with Shelburne East. We would designate that on our final plat as part of Shelburne East.
Okay. And then what is the intent with that parcel, that, that large parcel there on the, on?
And that is where there is an existing home that will remain.
Okay, indefinitely?
I, I'm, I'm sure there's an opportunity for redevelopment in the future, but currently that will remain.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Thanks, Debra, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, I don't think I get to get to the iPad come, do we have anybody signed up?
Mr. Chair, due to that technical glitch, we didn't capture any sign-ins.
Okay.
But that's been fixed.
Sorry if the iPads weren't working, but we'll hopefully get through this. Is there anyone in the public who would like to testify? Sir, come join us, please. Thank you for being here, and please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Brian Wilson. I'm at 6171 Cutting Horse Drive, Kuna, 83634. I own the property to the east, that subdivision that's coming in, South Park, right here. I don't know if you can see it.
Is it on Arabian, is that what that is?
It's Arabian, yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have that subdivision. We haven't developed it yet, but we're working on it. We are required along the canal a 20-foot easement on the south side of the canal, for pedestrian path and for access for border control. And I'm just wondering, so that's just going to dead-end right, right there on the canal, on the 10-mile?
So, that's a great question. Sonya, I think we talked about this, but we'll have the applicant address it as well, but do we have, there is an easement, I know that it's going to be there. Is there, what, we're not setting it up or anything else at this time, correct?
Chairman, that is correct. Our pathways master plan depicts a pathway on the northeast side of that 10-mile feeder canal. The Parks Department is requesting only an easement at this time.
It's on the north side, not on the south side, correct? And you're developing in Boise, right?
I'm Ada County.
Oh, it's Ada County, okay.
That's unfortunate, but.
Ada County required us to do that, and what, because we had to get approved by Boise City, and that was Boise City, too. And Ada County required it, because they said that was like a road, trails to river or whatever, one of those deals.
Roads to rivers or?
Roads to river.
Rivers to trails.
But.
I think they got the wrong side of the, the canal.
Oh, yeah, well, they required it for us, because they said that that's what we were have, they're going to have to do, so. And now, border control uses that all the time, so.
Is there any possibility, Chairman, not communicating directly with the speaker here, but?
Yes, ma'am.
For them to switch that location?
Is it already done? Is it already built out?
Oh, yeah, well, we, the first phase is already built, and this is just the last phase. phase. And the, yeah, it's already there.
Okay. I'll have, I'll have the applicant address it when she comes back up. Any additional comments, sir?
No, no. So they're going, so I'm just about ready to go to Meridian Fire. We're in Boise City Arabian Pact, Meridian Fire, Meridian Schools.
Yes, sir.
And we tried to get our subdivision, since Shelburne started, the last twenty-six lots into Meridian, but Boise City would not let us out of the Arabian Pact. So, because our, everything we have drains, right, we could hook into that sewer and be perfect, because everything drains. It's five-foot drop from up here to down there for twenty-six lots. But anyhow, we tried, but Boise City just said, no way. And I didn't even, I went to Kuna, or to Meridian, and you guys said, yeah, you could take it. But Boise City won't let us out, because they want to run their main line, thirty-inch sewer line, through our property.
Understood. Thank you for the information. We'll have the applicant address that on your side, sir. Thank you very much. Any additional public comment, or anyone who would like to testify on this application, going once, twice? Deborah, would you like to come up and close, ma'am? Maybe you could address how we're going to do ditch writing and those fun things for, on that easement on Ten Mile Canal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are providing the easement that was requested by the Parks Department and city staff along the northeast side of the Ten Mile feeder canal. It will be located outside of the existing irrigation maintenance road. This is the side of the canal that is shown on the city's master pathways plan, as Sonya just said. I would also just point out for you, it's also the side of the canal that is just to the north of this property line that is required to be built out, you know. So that is the side of the canal as shown in the city's master pathway plan that has been required of adjacent development. So that's, that is unfortunate that that wasn't matched outside of your jurisdiction, but we're, we are building it or planning it in accordance with your plans.
The pure media triangle of canal easements. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Castelli.
I had a couple more questions, sir. Do, does, so, three questions, actually, Deborah. The, the HOA, is this part of the full, the complete Shelburne? And will they share amenities to, to the other Shelburne? Yes. Okay, thank you.
And I'll just put on the record, yes, so that could be heard.
The, what, what were your thoughts on the fencing? What did you, because you didn't like the, the wrought iron, but you wanted to do some open fencing. So what are you, are you talking about like three-barrel fence or something? What are you?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Castelli, actually, what they'd like to do is provide the type of vinyl fence that has the open lattice work at the top. So it, and they would provide, they, what we've offered in the conditions of approval, the alternate language, was to provide a detail showing that in the landscape plans to be approved. This is an allowed fencing, open fencing type under your code. And we thought it would match better with the existing vinyl fencing that we're putting for our privacy fences. And it is our preferred fencing for that common area.
Okay.
It's consistent style, really.
Couple more questions. The, the shelter that you depicted, are you, can you?
Sonya, you had that. Would you mind bringing that up?
Went through that real quickly. Have you considered other shelters that sort of fit with the design of the homes? It seems a little commercial-like.
Well, I'll ask Megan to correct me if I, if she's got a different view on this. I, I am sure that the applicant would consider a different style of, of shelter for a different aesthetic look.
The nod helps. And my final question. There were a couple of testimonies in there from a, a neighbor, Kirkwood, and there was issues with, they were concerned about access to a back pasture or something. Can you address that?
Chairman, Commissioner Castelli, I'd be happy to. And I, and yesterday, our engineer was out meeting with them on site, so I think addressed their concerns on this. But as I understand that conversation, they, they do have access to Grayson Street, which is just to the north of their property, that, that will provide that to our new local street. And we're happy to install a gate in that fencing there for them to have access to their back pasture.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Some questions?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, one, one more.
One more question.
Thank you.
So I, I know we've got a challenge with the pathway mix-up on the east side and this side. If at some point they decide they want to build a footbridge across that canal there to connect the two pathways, I don't know if your group would be amenable to at least allowing an easement or some sort, so they could work out a, a bridge of some sort, a cross-access?
Cross-access.
I don't know if that makes sense, what I'm asking.
Just trying to make sure it connects.
Because if the, if the neighborhood to the east is developing the pathway along the south side of the canal, and you're developing, or you're leaving it open for an easement on the north part, there would probably have to be some sort of footbridge at some point to connect the two. Just making sure that we'd be okay with having access to that if that was.
Box cord.
Chairman, Commissioner Holland, I'd be happy to address that. And, you know, I can, I'll stand for correction, but we will be providing a publicly available fourteen-foot easement. And so obviously, they will be able to connect into that, and without any objection or concern, it'll be available. You can see from the location of our lots, we don't have access to that on the south side of the canal on our property. But if somebody else wanted to construct a pedestrian, ax, a bridge across and then connect into that easement path, you know, of course, that would be compatible with what we've got designed.
Okay, thank you.
One more question. So I, I know you guys were amenable to the east-west connection of the pathway on the lateral that's in the middle of the neighborhood. The five-foot versus ten-foot, I know, I understand that there is, you go out to pretty much nothing right now. But I don't, that's still county and undeveloped in a lot of cases. Is there a concern with putting a ten-foot pathway into it, since we're not doing anything to the north? I mean, I, I know it's a cost thing, but it, it's like, it's maybe a give-and-take, just to make it, make it so that we could have a pathway connection there?
Chairman, that, that's a fair question. It, it's more than just cost, though. It's really that that will eat up the green space and put a lot of pavement right through the middle of this amenity that we, I mean, it just has a very aesthetically different appearance. And particularly because this is truly a local amenity. And yes, there could be some future connectivity to the property immediately to our west and eventually to the school site, but no further. So you don't need a lot of, it's not a multi-use traffic situation with, you know, high use of bikes going back and forth. But it still would be available for that use. It still does provide that connectivity for, you know, schoolchildren to walk to, to schools. So I think the, the benefits would still be there with the connection that we've agreed to, to extend it all the way to the property boundary. But to put in the size of pavement really eats up the green space. It would look really different in this area where that open-water feature is pretty attractive from just an aesthetic visual perspective.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Chair.
Mr. Castelli.
Just, if I could just get clarification. So the, what staff is, is requiring the ten-foot pathway, that's going down the middle. The middle is the Nine Mile Creek. So we're talking about going through the middle there from the pickleball court diagonally to the southeast. Is that correct?
Yeah. Chairman, Commissioner Castelli, it would run along the southwest side of Nine Mile Creek, which does, it's, it's the creek that does run through the center. And it would extend at this point, based on the staff's new conditions, all the way to the northwest and the southeast of the property, and we've agreed to extend it.
Okay. And, and you are, you're in agreement with extending it?
Yes.
Okay, but not with the width?
We just ask that it be a five-foot paved width and an eight-foot easement, and that'll fit there.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Yeah.
Commissioner Seal, we're not letting you go.
I can be here all night.
After one question, we're now on twelve.
That's right. Just a quick question on the connectivity into the cul-de-sacs. Is that going to be something that will be mod, I mean, the cul-de-sacs will be modified to provide for access to that from bikes and rollerblades, skateboards and such?
Yeah. Don't know. Chairman, Commissioner Seal, it, the, it looks to me, and I'm sorry I don't have a more specific answer for you, other than by looking at the site plan, that the cul-de-sac is right there on that common area. And so, yes, we could provide a footpath right up to that pathway. I, I don't see why that doesn't fit there. Any concerns?
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
And before we get a motion to close the public hearing, we had one public, piece of public testimony that didn't get kind of uploaded on time into the system. So I know, want to make sure everybody at the dais has read the letter from Mr. Palumbo, and that it's in the record officially, and we've all read it, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll make sure that we got that on record, because we've all read it and appreciated his comments.
Got a couple of questions for staff.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Just on the, the path going from five-foot, or from ten-foot to eight-foot, is that, is that a code requirement, or is that just a recommendation?
Chairman, Commissioner Seal, it is a recommendation from Parks Department.
So it can go from zero to however big they want to make it, basically, correct?
Five-foot's a minimum requirement.
Minimum requirement, okay. Good to know that. And then, as far as the Lot One, Block Eight, the question out there basically seems to be that if you mark that lot as unbuildable, does that deny them the right to make that into a park in the future?
I, Chairman, Commissioner Seal, I, I would recommend that we label it as a common lot. I, I think that's the intent of the applicant. You could verify that with them.
That was my thought. Instead of an unbuildable lot, make it a common lot.
Right. Which, allow them to build a structure on it if they want, but just not a residential structure.
Deborah, can you come up and put that on the record, please, ma'am? I just want to make sure that we're not talking about making the, the triangle up to the northeast a unbuildable lot, but a common lot, that you can build a structure on, put in this not-house.
Mr. Chairman, we are in complete agreement with that.
Thank you very much. Additional questions, Commissioner Seal?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Castelli.
Were you, were you done?
Okay.
For staff, Sonya, are you, is, is staff okay with their concept of the fencing?
Staff is a little unsure what their fencing style is. I, I'm a little, as long as it complies with UDC standards, adjacent to common areas and open space, that's fine. Our open-vision fencing is defined as a fence that does not restrict or impede vision or sight through the fence by more than twenty percent. So I'm, I'm just concerned that their style with lattice on top might be closer together than that and more of a closed-vision fence. So staff is okay with just a provision saying meeting UDC standards.
Meeting UDC standards, okay.
The reason for the condition was their description and their, and their picture of their fence didn't match.
Thank you. Additional thoughts or comments for, or questions for staff? If not, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I move closed public hearing, item number four C, Shelburne South, item H dash two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-one-zero-six.
Second.
I have a motion to second to close the public hearing on H twenty-nine-teen-dash-zero-one-zero-six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same. Motion passes. Properly before you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
Everyone's speaking up. I'll just go through the items that they requested in order. I, I think on the fencing, I'm open to them doing an open-vision lattice on the top with vinyl fencing, as long as it meets UDC standards. I think that's a reasonable request. Nine Mile Creek, I think it's also a reasonable request to, to have a five-foot pathway instead of the ten-foot. I like ten-foot pathways, but when it's, the way that they laid it out here, I, I agree, I'd rather have the green space than have a bunch of asphalt in the middle of their neighborhood. It's, it's the common lot for the neighborhood, and I'd much rather have them have an extra five feet of playroom. I don't see any concerns with relocating the easement to Lot One, Block Three for the Freeman parcel access. I think it still makes sense, as long as they've got access.
Yeah.
And that works with staff. I'm good with that, too. And then, fine with Lot One, Block Eight being renamed as a common lot. And I would also echo Commissioner Castelli's comment earlier about the picketing shelter, just making sure that the style would match the neighborhood. I think that's it that we talked about.
I think it, I, I agree with everything you just said. What, I think it's a very nice-looking project. I think the amenities are a nice package. I wish Boise and Ada County would have organized themselves a little better than, in that neighborhood. But hopefully that will come to a conclusion in a positive way. But I think I'm in agreement with everything you just said.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Castelli.
All in all, I, I, I really liked the, the layout. I liked the home styles in there. I like everything. I'm, I'm in full support of the five-foot pathway along Nine Mile Creek. I, with the regional pathway, just two blocks up the corner there, I don't think it's, I don't think it's an issue. I'd also like to, depending on where we get, recognize the, make sure that they work with that neighbor, the Kirkwoods, I think, on their, on their easement. Here's, here's the issue I, I have. Again, it's an infrastructure thing, and it's something beyond our control, but I think we need to look at it. ACHD does not require a traffic impact study with fewer than a hundred home sites. Shelburne Number One, forty-eight home sites, no impact study. Shelburne Number Two, seventy-eight. Shelburne East, ninety-nine. Shelburne South, ninety-nine. Not a single traffic impact study. A total of three hundred and, what I'm getting there is three hundred and twenty-four homes with no traffic impact study. If you add in some of the neighboring subdivisions that also didn't have a traffic impact study, you go well over that. Yes, everything is going to be developed out, but it's not done yet. It, I, I, one of the, I'd have to go pull, open up the ACHD report and see. I think it's on Cloverdale where the level of service was an F. And if you read the National Transportation Study levels and see what level of F is, you'll basically see it's, it's gridlocked and cars not moving. I can't in good conscience put my support behind this until the infrastructure's in place. I love the subdivision. I like everything about it and what we've talked about. But I have an issue with that, and I, it's, it's something we have to look at, because it goes to the livability of the city when you can't get around. And again, it's not the developer's fault. It's not the city's fault. It's out of our control. But I think we have to, we have to work within those limits. If, if all the roads were developed as the, as they're, as they will be by, I think on there about 2026, it would fit. But from that standpoint, and I, I mean, I, I don't know if we can make a recommendation to deny based on that, but if, if it were looked at, I think as a, one large development, ACHD would have required a traffic impact study, and remediations would have been put in place to make this happen. But it, but because it's broken down in such small pieces, it, it, it wasn't. But the problem is, is once you put this all together, you have, you have that mess.
I appreciate where you're coming from. The challenge I have is, the way that the system's set up, you're, you're hurting the landowner and not the other way around. And so I, I have a challenge with that, because I, there, if I'm a landowner, I want to be able to develop in the manner way that they can, and where the market needs, or what the market demands. The way where our system is set up, that's, that is, it's out of our purview, and the only way you build that up is to build more rooftops, because that's where taxes come from. So unless we want to completely restructure how we're doing things, we can have this conversation across the board for every neighborhood that comes down the pipe. And I think you're putting that weight of previous development and lack of infrastructure on the landowner, and that's not fair. And that's a very big burden for them to carry, and it's, it puts them at a disadvantage for people who've developed their property already. So that's my opinion. I, so I completely disagree with where you're going, but I understand the sentiment, just not how, how you got there.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
Well, I certainly know all of our roads are, we wish that our road systems would be developed. be developed ahead of development. We know it doesn't happen that way. So I think my comments in that is that some of these homes are developed in phases for a reason so that they're not all there at the same time. So, you know, all the Shelburnes didn't come together at one point in time. I think that this, this seems like an adequate phase of 99 homes and it's split into two phases that won't start construction until 2021, maybe 2022. I know cities work with ACHD on their priority list every year and priorities get reevaluated and they get bumped up if there's demand pressures from neighboring developments. They try to watch the comp plans for the cities to make sure that they plan for what the roadways need in the long term. So I think I would agree with your comments, Chair, on not requiring a traffic study for this one development, but certainly requesting staff to work with ACHD on priorities for making sure that we keep our roads safe.
And I, yeah, no, I totally agree with that. And that's, I mean, for, for your policy discussion, I have no problem with talking about if we're going to put assemblies together when a traffic study is necessary and that's, if that's the direction we want to go. It's hard to leave it on the last guy holding the bag, so. Additional thoughts? Smiles, waves?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I agree with what was stated earlier as far as, you know, essentially the issues that are, that are on the, on the table. The traffic part of it, I mean, traffic's a problem. So and by building, we're adding to the problem and that, that part is obvious. But I mean, like you said on a previous application, I mean, rooftops help take care of that to a certain degree. Unfortunately, the, or the rooftops go in and then traffic gets, goes from bad to worse and then eventually it gets better. So I live right in the middle of an area of town that is suffering badly because of this right now. So I completely understand that viewpoint of it. That said, there is improvements that are funded, that are coming, that will address this. And I'm not sure if we want to pass anything up to City Council that would recommend making it a bigger priority or working towards that end. I don't know that it would do much considering that it's in the next round of approved projects to basically go forward. But just on record, traffic is a problem and, and I don't know that we can be confined by it necessarily other than, I mean, applicants that are building in that area, if the traffic's already really bad and you're looking at houses where you're having trouble just getting there, you may not want to buy there at this point. So, you know, the timeline for building here, starting in late 2021 or 2022, hopefully there's some road construction underway that's, that looks like it's going to improve upon some of that.
Thoughts?
Yeah, I totally get the traffic. I mean, I live out past 10 Mile and Victory and we've spent months with those roads closed because they've put in the sewer lines only to come back and have the same two lanes there. And I'm like, why didn't they just open it up while they're closed, you know? But it takes the rooftops to do it. I get that. So, I mean, until the rooftops are there, they're not, I mean, and everything goes by plan. So I do like the subdivision. I mean, coming in at the density, it does, I very much appreciate seeing that. And I would echo the comments of Commissioner Holland before. I have no problem with the five-foot pathway. The, and my screen here has disappeared with all the asks of the applicant, but I was in agreement with those comments. So, yeah, unfortunately, the roads are what they are, but I agree, it's the rooftops that drive that to move up the agenda on those roads. So I'd be in support of what we've talked about here tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Castanelli.
I just wanted to make a, just add on to what I was saying. I get that it's outside of our purview and we can't do that. We're, you know, we're kind of, we're not left with a whole lot of choices on that. I understand that. The, the, the big issue I have is that there's, because it's done in the way it's done, when I, when I look at the numbers, everything comes in below what's required for a traffic impact study, but as a whole, it would sure as heck need one. And there would be something required upfront before this going in. But because it's developed and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to tie the, the landowner's hands on that, but, and everything's funded. I get everything's funded and planned for, for it to happen. It's just, again, it's an infrastructure thing. And that's, that's my, that's my concern.
Maybe that's a policy discussion we need to have in one of our council PMZ meetings. Is when does that, when there's a, when does that become a need? Is after you assemble so many things, when do we need to have a traffic study that, it's Shelburne 14 and they've all been, you know, 2020, 2020, 2020, they add up to 1,000 homes. We need to have a impact study somewhere in the middle or something. So I get where you're going. I understand. I, but it's a policy discussion, too. I just hate to hamper the landowners that want to build and add on to an HOA that takes good care of their property. That's the challenge. It's the balancing act. But I understand your sentiment. Traffic is an issue.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I had it written down, but I didn't make the comment earlier, but I just want to comment on, I'm happy to see that the layout of the subdivision, I really like it. I like cul-de-sacs. So, I mean, they kind of accidentally or on purpose had to architect around, you know, that nine-mile canal that's there. But I think they did an exceptional job on it. And instead of going for trying to squeeze more things into less space, they left an appropriate amount or more than what was needed for open space. So I really like that about this subdivision. And I think having that, that pathway in there and connecting it, especially with the cul-de-sacs in there and everything, that this right here is something that appeals to me as, as having kids and, and having families and things like that. Just the ability for everybody to get around and, you know, have access to different parts of the neighborhood without having to go out on a busy street. I really like that about this subdivision.
I totally agree. I think there's the little buffers on, along the streets, sides, and the interconnectivity is great. You guys did a nice job of designing it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Holland.
I'm going to throw a motion out there and see what happens. After considering our staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to City Council File Number H-2019-0106 for Shelburne South, as presented in staff report for the hearing date of January 16th, 2020, with the following modifications. One, on fencing, that the applicant would be able to utilize open vision lattice vinyl fencing as long as it's compliant and meets the UDC standards. Two, that the Nine Mile Creek, they would add a pathway that goes all the way to east and west, but that we would allow for a five-foot pathway and an eight-foot easement instead of the 10-foot pathway. That the access to the Freeman parcel, we would be willing to relocate the easement to Lot 1 and Block 3 as presented by the applicant. That Lot 1 Block 8 would be designated as a common lot in the plat so that in the future it could be utilized as a public space. And that the applicant would consider alternate picnic shelter styles to match the neighborhood development and design.
I have a motion in a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same.
Name.
Mr. Castanelli, what I would try to say before is, would you like yourself to be recognized on the record as having said no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight. Moving on to our last item on the docket, item 4D, ascent subdivision, File Number H-2019-0122. And we will start with staff report from Sonia.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. The next application for you is a annexation and zoning, a preliminary plat and a conditional use permit. This site consists of 4.97 acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and it's located on the north side of West Franklin Road, approximately a third of a mile east of North Black Cat Road. Adjacent land use and zoning, this property is surrounded by rural residential agricultural uses, owned R1 and RUT in Ada County. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is medium high-density residential, which calls for 8 to 15 units per acre, and it is in the 10-mile interchange specific area plan. Annexation of 5.25 acres of land with R15 zoning is requested for the development of apartments at a gross density of 14.49 units per acre consistent with the land uses and density desired in the medium-high-density residential future land use designated area. This application was submitted prior to the new comprehensive plan being adopted. Therefore, it was reviewed under the previous comprehensive plan. The 10-mile interchange plan did not change with the recent revamp of the comp plan, so just wanted to state that. A preliminary plat is proposed, consisting of nine building lots and five common lots on 4.97 acres of land. One two-story multifamily structure consisting of eight units is proposed to be constructed on each lot. A conditional use permit is proposed for a multifamily development consisting of 72 dwelling units in the R15 district. While the use and density proposed is consistent with the UDC and the medium-high-density residential future land use map designation, the design of the project is not consistent with the design policies in the 10-mile interchange plan as follows. And these are notated in detail with explanations in your staff report. So assuming you've read those, I'm not going to go through the whole, the whole detail, but the, it's not consistent with the following design policies. Street-oriented design of residential buildings, buildings to scale, neighborhood design, and that is the mixed, mixed housing stock, architecture and design, streetscape and streets. Building form and character, neighborhood residential and public art. They are lacking, the design is lacking in all of those areas. Access is proposed from one access from Franklin Road. And the plan on the left there is a copy of the site plan proposed by the applicant, as well as the open space. The open space is in accord with the minimum UDC standards, as is the site amenities. And these are the conceptual building elevations. The ones on the upper left are of the clubhouse. The ones on the right are the multifamily structures. There are two different floor plans. One is for one-bedroom units and one is for two-bedroom units. There are no three-bedroom units. And these are some photos of these same type of structures that are currently being constructed in Harper Ridge subdivision and out by, I think it's Silverstone area out on Eagle So there was no written testimony on this application. The applicant is going to respond to the staff report. Staff is recommending denial of the conditional use permit due to the design of the project not being consistent with the design policies in the 10-mile plan. Staff is consequently recommending denial of the annexation because we do not have a concept plan that is consistent with our 10-mile plan and comprehensive plan. And additionally, the preliminary plat for the same reasons. Staff, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions for Sonia.
Sonia, you mentioned that the application was submitted prior to the new comp plan being adopted. So it was reviewed under the previous comp plan. Was there a different designation in the new comp plan for this area or was it supposed to still be the medium-high density?
Chairman, Commissioner Holland, it is the same designation.
Thank you.
Density has changed in the new comp plan, but this is consistent with the previous plan.
Thank you.
It's the main difference.
Additional questions? Thank you very much. The applicant like to come forward?
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Schultz, 8421 South, 10 miles long walk with the recommendation for denial. But I don't think it's as bad as it's portrayed. And I appreciate staff, as much work as they got going to, to get it to this stage where their conditions are on paper. They've, I think there's a lot of good things in here that I want to accentuate and also talk through some of the, some of the reasons they think that they should recommend denial. And my, my goal is, if you notice at the end of the staff report, they say if it is your prerogative to ask for approval, that it would be continued for two weeks to, to get some conditions because we don't have any really to talk about conditions. And so my goal is to be able to talk through these issues and find out what's ultimately important for you as, and hopefully you'll feel your hands are as tied as staff did on recommend and denial with some specific conditions, you know, of approval that we could come back and, and I don't know if that's two weeks potentially. That's my goal is to get to that point tonight with you and get some feedback, neighbors. Let's see, see where we're at and then we'll go from there. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I've been working in the area now on Franklin Road since 2006, working on the Berea project across the street. We were original stakeholders, if you will, in the 10-mile specific area plan that was done between 2006 and 2007. I know I'm showing my age, but it's been a while. What's that math? 13 years? Still working on the Berea project, wrapping it up. That one consisted of 94 acres, 334 units of R8 and R15, attached alleys, detached alleys, standard, standard front stuff. 67 acres laid out at about six, five to the acre, excuse me. And then there's some R40 that had some apartments, 16 and 24 unit apartments that laid out at about 20 to the acre. Overall, it was six to the acre on the 94 acres. But we had a 94-acre blank slate to be able to incorporate a lot of different mixes and of alleys and this and that. And it's room. With this five-acre site, or excuse me, 4.97, it's important. Devils in those fractions sometimes. Not that we're relying on that for anything tonight, but it is a small site. And so there are, we are constrained in how we accomplish some of those things that staff thinks are in, there are absolutes in the 10-mile specific plan. And my assertion is that they're not absolutes. This isn't a square peg in a round hole. There's, there's a couple of different holes that can be filled out here. And this is one of the, one part of the diversity that's out here. What we are proposing on the site, and I'm going to start with some low-hanging issues as far as annexation, first of all, in the zoning, is that this has been master-planned, R15, medium-high-density since 2007, and it has not changed in that regard. This area, the whole 10-mile area specific plan, which I don't know the exact acreage, was it 1,500 acres? Was it 1,200 acres? It's a pretty big area, you know, on the east side of 10 Mile, the west side of 10 Mile, up to the railroad tracks and down to the highway, across the highway, some of that area down there is in it as well. So it's, it's probably about 1,500 acres or so, let's just say, of which we are five of that. It was important, I know, that there was some density proposed in that. Put your, for lack of a better word, density where your services are, where your arterials are, where your proximity is to the freeway and future employment nodes, commercial nodes, and we meet that. We're, I think we're a half mile down to 10 Mile and another, less than, you know, probably three-quarters down to the interchange and you're on the interstate. Franklin has been widened to five lanes and when you wait long enough, things get widened. It's amazing. So it's five lanes. There is a bike path. There is sidewalk on both sides. So I mean, all those improvements on Franklin are in and done. We're not waiting for 2025, you know, it's done. So it's eminently developable. It's eminently annex, annexable from the south. We don't touch the apartments that are just east of us, but we do touch across the street to Berea. So the services are there. The infrastructure's there. The zoning is right for this in R15. We first looked at the site. It was brought to me by a residential builder, not the one across the street. And said, hey, Matt, what do you think? Should we do some little townhomes and, you know, little tash, some cute little stuff? Hey, let me look at it. So I did a layout, came up with staff. It was about six, seven to the acre. And they just say, hey, Matt, our target's closer to 12 plus. Okay. So that, that guy was not interested. But I had another guy that was looking at a hard site that was going to be a really difficult site to do multifamily in North Meridian and partnered him up with the guy who's done Harper Ridge, which was approved two years ago. PMZ and City Council there and by Citibank, between Citibank and Suburban Farm. Great product, contemporary style. It's a two-year-old, you know, updated style for multifamily that we did. Pretty low intensity in terms of density. On Harper Ridge, it laid out at 12, so I thought it would be a perfect fit in terms of density. In this case, it laid out closer to 14 because of efficiencies, but it wasn't because of anything other than it was just a little more. anything other than it was just a little more efficient geometry and layout and all that, so it came in a little bit higher. It wasn't our goal to get that density, it's just what worked on this particular site. We think it's a good design, architecture. We think that it fits. We have double the required open space. We exceed the amenities. We got our accesses all approved through ACHD. We've got a little bit of a missing, I mean, I think a difference of opinion on the 10 Mile Area Specific Plan, on what it says and what's allowed, and what some exceptions might be. So in this case, staff has indicated in some, in some brief conversations that, you know, we don't want parking lots, you know, drive aisles are just not acceptable in the 10 Mile Area Specific Plan, which is a core difference of opinion we have, knowing that we'd done Berea apartments with drive aisles and carports, and the one, there's another one in the area that has even, even the 10 Mile lofts has drive aisles and carports. So I don't think that's specifically excluded in the 10 Mile Plan that you can do, can't do drive aisles and carports. We are limited in terms of, we don't have road on one side and road on the other, because like I said, we're only five acres, we're limited on connecting to the, to the west on Zimmerman, that's a private drive, nothing to the east, nothing to the north. We do have an arterial there, so we're kind of hemmed in on what we can do geometrically to get alley loads and things like that. So what we have is something we think that fits. We think that there's some, I said, I have eight minutes left here, I might use it to go through some of the staff conditions, that, and kind of talk as best I can to, like I said, not the R15, not the annexation, which staff has indicated they support, but since they don't approve this, so just throw it all away, and I don't think it's worth doing that. So where we stand is, there's some talk about, and I highlighted some stuff today, we got the report yesterday, and that this site is pedestrian-friendly. They seem to say in the staff report that it wasn't somehow. We do have sidewalks throughout, there's a few more sections I see we could add, there's a few stubs that, you know, east and west and north for future connectivity that we could do really easily to add that in there. There are sidewalks, seven-foot sidewalks throughout. There is good connectivity, so we disagree with that. We also disagree with the drive aisles not being allowed. I think there's a parsing of definitions that's happened somehow, the drive aisles aren't the same as a driveway. I don't know how that happened, but somehow it did in the staff report. So, my glasses on, I was just looking at Lasik the other day. Talking about porches, street-oriented design residential buildings, it says porches should be located along at least 30% of the front facade. And with these multifamilies, as you know, we don't necessarily have porches per se, we have balconies, private balconies typically with stacked multifamily. It says this design element is intended to strengthen the social street life and pedestrian focus of the development, and that may be true, and that may be very important to you. I don't think that we detract from it with this design. For some reason, they think that this detracts from it, because we don't have porches, which would be tough to do in a stacked multifamily. The building to scale, it says with parking lots surrounded buildings, a lack of internal streets and pedestrian ways, and I think we have plenty of internal drives and pedestrian ways. This is generally an auto-dominated development that distorts the human scale and is not consistent with the plan. I don't know if that's true. I don't think having this distorts the human scale. There's some verbiage from 2007 in that, in that plan that's causing some hangups that I'm not quite understanding. Having 13 years of experience working on a 10 Mile Plan in the city, that I think they're trying, they're trying to apply some, maybe some single-family standards as well to this multifamily, and there's some, there's some cross-conditions going on here. As far as, it says front porches and garages access from alley are usually, usually the standard in residential areas. It doesn't say anything about multifamily versus single-family, this is residential. And parking is primarily located behind buildings. I think in general, we have tried to put our buildings on the outside and our parking on the inside, so from a higher level looking at it, we don't have parking right off of, you know, our perimeter so it's visible from Franklin. It's very well, it's inside. So I think we have, with our site design, tried to flip that. It'd be really easy to put it on the perimeter, but we did not. We put it in the interior to de-emphasize, and as you know, we have strict parking standards, two per, two per unit, which is what we have. again, it talks about us not having parkways and internal connectivity. Each one of these buildings does have a stairwell, two stairwells. Each one of the openings has two downs and two ups, two downs and two ups, and the balconies are on, I guess you would say, the back. We think that's a good privacy thing. There's a potential we could put up in the front and totally redesign the building. We like the privacy of it, and again, for such a small site, and if we did have the flexibility of having more roads and things like that, you could meet that. We think that this site should allow that. There's something about stoop footage, frontage, about 18 to 24-inch above sidewalk grade in the front. You just don't do that with multifamily. You can't meet ADA if you jumped up two feet from your back of your sidewalk to your building. You can meet it in single-family with some steps, you know, with multifamily, you can't. So like I said, I think there's some cross-conditions going on here between multifamily and single-family that are just being put in there and say you don't meet it, denied unfortunately. Public art, I'm sorry, I didn't know that we were required to put public art in here. The way I read your conditions, one of the amenities is public art, but a pool trumps that, and we got a pool, a hot tub, really a nice sitting area and great amenities in this thing, but we can put some public art in there if we need to.
So Matt, can you wrap it up, my friend?
I got two minutes, I thought. I'm getting there.
Okay, I would say-
I'm getting there.
My timer is getting ready to go off. I was just, if yours is different than mine-
Mine says 2:10.
Okay.
Mine says 2:10.
I don't see mine, so.
There you go. I'm getting close, I know, but I won't not go-
Okay, I was just making sure we're on the same page.
I promise, I promise.
Okay.
It does say the 10 Mile Area Specific Plan requires residential streets or alleys to be provided for access to dwellings within the development. It says only drive aisles are proposed, but parking on each side. That's, it's a driveway, it is how we access these kind of developments. Easy comment, somehow there's a detailed chain link on the trash enclosures about the setbacks, all the property management office and storage and mailbox, we could do a better job of highlighting that in the community center. And like I said, we exceed the common area open space, we hit the density targets, we got great consultants to help us through this process, and we think it's a little bit unfair with the condition of denial. We hope that you would maybe not be so strict. We respect it if you are, you would allow us some flexibility, given its small size and geometry and access, that we are providing the good, diverse, different, contemporary, is the proper term, I think modern, but contemporary design that wasn't contemplated 15 years ago, when the plan was done, very high level. So we're not asking you to ignore the 10 Mile Plan, we're just asking you to acknowledge that there are different ways to hit the diversity and some of the other, the bigger goals of the 10 Mile Plan than getting down and saying you can't do drive aisles for multifamily. So with that, we acknowledge it's not an ideal situation, but we'd ask that we see how it goes, and I'll leave the rest of my comments for rebuttal.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant currently? We appreciate it, sir, thank you. Madam Clerk, are we in the same situation? Nobody?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this application? Show of hands, anyone? Anyone just here to hang out? Matt, do you want to, do you have any additional thoughts?
Was that it?
I don't think anybody is here to testify, so.
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask you, just give me the straight rundown, because I think my concern that we got into is, like, you guys need to go back, we need to continue, you guys go back to the planning board. That's what my gut is telling me, but I would love to, like, walk me through your bullet points of where the concerns are coming across.
Thank you, Commissioner and other Commissioner, Chairman and Commissioners. We believe that you do have the flexibility to recommend approval with specific conditions, that we extend the connections to the perimeter, that we, you know, add some detail to the site plan, that based on the fact that we do exceed the open space, we have great architecture that works, we're hitting density targets, which is important. You know, it's not density for density's sake, but it is important that in these areas that are specifically planned to be R15, we're not doing six to the acre stuff. And it's pretty rare that I get to deal with stuff like that. I'm usually fighting over three and a half versus three or something like that, but this is one of those areas where it's important that we do it. And then these other standards they're trying to apply, seem to be steering towards a three-story garage underneath, could be single-family with zero lot lines, but it could be multifamily depending on how they did it, like next door. Scenario when that, it was not the intent, that the whole 10 Mile Plan had that product, it's just not. And I know it wasn't, I was involved in it. And so I think there's some very overly, and that's fine to be overly strict interpretation of what's in that plan, but I think there's some misinterpretations of some of those things. So I think it's a very good project, it should be approved. If there's some conditions, like moving the balconies from the back to the front that would change it for you, great, but we just don't have the geometry and size to do a road down the middle with lots on both sides, with alleys on the back, with more lots, with open space, with more alley-lit lots, with alleys, you know what I mean? The geometry is required, transend this, and any five-acre portion throughout the community of the 10 Mile Plan is not going to have all those features. It just isn't. If you take any five-acre snapshot, we just happen to be a five-acre portion of this. So it's like the argument of mixed use, that all mixed-use parcels must be all mixed-use, and that's not it. I mean, you have a parcel within a mixed-use designation, and you might be all residential, and that might be all commercial over there, and within the overall thing, you're mixed-use. So it's kind of the same, same thought process. And so in that regard, we're not asking you to totally disregard the 10 Mile Plan, we think we meet a lot of those things that are in the 10 Mile Plan. And so we'll leave it with you. We don't, there's no planning board to go back to. We would ask that we do it a two-week, if that's what it is, a continuance, if that's what it would be, that we could show you these revisions, short of throwing the whole thing away and starting over without drive aisles. That's kind of where we got to draw the line. So if it's your, if it's your indication that you're going to say, hey, you need to get rid of all the drive aisles and do alleys and front it on roads and get six or seven to the acre with some, you know, single multifamily, then this'll be it, you know, that we would respect that. But if you can work with us, we can make all these revisions, we just don't want to waste everybody's time, but at the same time, I feel pretty strongly that these drive aisles and the way we've oriented our buildings is the right way to do it.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Castile?
Mr. Chair. Matt, you, you're very familiar then with the 10 Mile Interchange Plan, if you worked on it from '06, '07. Did you, when you were, when you were, when you were planning this out, did you, did you think about a lot of those issues and try and incorporate them?
Yes and no. We've done, we have done across the street in the 10 Mile Area Plan a multifamily development with 16, which would be two of these connected, and to go to a third story would be 20, you know, would go up higher. So during that process, there were some, because it was multifamily, some exceptions given. There were some considerations given for multifamily, and that was totally okay under how that was done, how the lofts was done, and how other multifamilies were done. All of a sudden, things have really gotten real literal on some verbiage in there that it's not dimensional-specific, it's a little vague, that on previous site plans, it was interpreted that this, this was okay. So we didn't ignore it, it was the same time. We just want to acknowledge that we think that the bigger points that it meets outweigh some of these finer points, that they're trying to be applied carte blanche across all developments, all of a sudden, whether it be multifamily or single-family, is all.
Additional questions? Commissioner Holland?
Mr. Chair. Matt, just looking at this parcel, I think one of the challenges, you know, to your project is just that it's, it's a little bit isolated with what's around it at the moment. So that's always a challenge when you're looking at a piece that's not quite an infill project, but about the size of an infill project. Did you have any conversations with some of the surrounding neighbors about the project? What were some of the comments that came back from those?
Our neighbor to the east on Franklin, who owns that home that's right on Franklin, they just bought it last year, he runs a gutter business out of it, he just said, man, we just thought that would be a field, you know, we had no idea there'd be a development going. That was about it. We did ask the gentleman, Zimmerman, that owns Zimmerman Lane, if you'd be willing to kind of work with us on a shared access or something like that, and said he was not interested in coordinating with any kind of development. That was just his prerogative on that. So beyond that, Mr. Zimmerman kind of owns the bigger parcel north of us, and then there's some smaller acres around us that didn't really seem to have any issues one way or the other, other than just do a nice development, which this is. You know, we consider this more the upper end, and nice finishes, nice amenities for such a small project, only 72 apartments. I say only, there's 250 and 300s around us. And so some of the larger, most of the 10 Mile Plan is large parcels. Most of it's 80s, 94s, 118s, you know, 300, and so there's a few of these smaller ones that to incorporate all those things into them are a challenge. It's a lot easier when you have an 80-acre blank slate to throw in all these roads and alleys and get the frontages you need, and on the five-acre sites, it's like you guys give waivers on open space and amenities on sites that are under five acres. In this case, we didn't ask for it. You know, we would have hit it even if it was required. We didn't ask for that waiver on that. You know, we are asking for a waiver on some of those street frontage requirements that are coming out.
So, follow-up?
Absolutely.
Again, I think the challenge is just that you're kind of an isolated parcel. There's been a lot of development happening along Franklin, between 10 Mile and Black Cat, certainly some higher-density projects that are coming in there. I mean, we can't control what order projects come into us necessarily, but my worry with this five-acre parcel is because it's about the size of an infill parcel, it might restrict how the rest of it develops around it someday when it redevelops, because it likely will at some point. So I think one of my other concerns would be how cross-access would work with neighboring parcels. By itself, if it was a five-acre infill parcel zone for high-density housing, I don't see a lot of concerns with the layout. I mean, it's, it looks like a standard multifamily development. I appreciate that there's a clubhouse and a pool, it's a nice amenity to have, but I certainly see where staff's coming from of wanting to have more of the cohesive feel because it's part of the 10 Mile area. I don't know that I have a question with that, just making a couple of comments to you and seeing if you had any feedback. One other thought for you too, just looking at this, and obviously I don't have the ability to manipulate your plan, but if you were to potentially flip some of those horizontal parcels vertical and maybe put the grassy area in the center so you could kind of have those balconies facing open into an open area, perhaps that would help your plan, look a little bit more cohesive with what the 10 Mile area is asking for, and put your parking around the outside, that might be an option to consider.
That's what we avoided initially, to kind of make it not visible from, kind of put it internally, so we avoided that right off of that. You know, we put it internal, not external, to kind of limit the look of how that looks from the road. As far as how the properties to the north might redevelop, right about here where my cursor's going is where that Entrada subdivision is, and they've got a public road that goes right here. It goes right to the property line. So they do have access here, and they may get another access out the other way. Not sure ACHD's going to allow that to be a public road in the future because of some offsets going, not only to us, but there's some other public road offsets they don't meet on an arterial, it's too close. And so it is able to develop. If they were to totally redevelop, we're okay putting cross-access easements, I'm not sure what that would look like in the future like you, and how that would connect. We can certainly- we could certainly do it, you know, to have it there just in case somebody wants to connect in. And if the site ever wanted to redevelop and just extend two more buildings into here, they could very easily, without having to take future access onto Franklin Road. And so that's something that needs to get on the plat if it moves forward, that we would put that in there, so.
Additional questions? Thanks, Matt, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, hold on one second. Commissioner Castanelli.
I have a couple of questions for staff, I guess maybe before we close public hearing. Sonya, did the, I'm confused, I guess, on the, on the density between the new plan and the old plan, did it change on this parcel or not?
Chairman, Commissioner Castanelli, the density range in the future land use map designation of medium-high-density residential changed. So the new plan calls for eight to 12 units per acre, and the previous plan was eight to 15 units per acre. The proposed plan is consistent with the previous plan, which is what is governed, their development is governed by.
Okay. And then, thank you, and then second question, the, pull this, pull something back up here, the development, the Franklins, is that the name of it there, just to the east, does that, how does that fit with, with a lot of the 10-mile interchange specific plans and what's being required here?
Are you referencing the Entrada Farms development to the east on Franklin?
No, is it the Franklin and 10-mile, the one that's, the development that already exists?
It was approved maybe for like a downturn.
That was way before?
It was like in '05 or '04.
Yeah, we've got, we've got some developments out there that started before 10-mile plan was adopted, and I think you're referring to, it came through the processes, Silver Oaks and Abundale, and there was-
So that was, that was before, that was prior.
It was before the, they had concept plans that were in their development agreement. And then Baraya, I'm not sure, it was right there, I'm not sure if it was before the 10-mile plan was adopted or not.
Okay. I was just, I was curious on those.
But it's, it's really important going forward, that if we're going to have this 10-mile plan, that development's consistent with that plan, either that or the council needs to go back and make some modifications to it.
Sure. Thank you.
Hey Matt, one second, because I'm going to let this gentleman in the back comment and then let you close. Sir, thanks for being here, please state your name and your address for the record.
Andrew Itchvaria, 4110 West Franklin Road. I own the property to the east there, the acre. I mean, I'm against it, obviously, I like not having neighbors, but of course, it is what it is. The only thing I would ask is, I mean, obviously they're going to have a big privacy fence there or something, I would ask for like more trees for like privacy, you know, with these two-story buildings, I don't want people looking over my yard at my kids, things like that, you know. I mean, it is what it is, I'm against it, but I just kind of wanted to say that.
And we'll have him address that on the fencing for you guys when he comes back up.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir. Thanks, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Castanelli. Yeah, the 10-mile, Baraya was definitely part of the 10-mile plan, we waited a year to get going on it, to be patient and work through that, and our plan exactly conformed to it. And I know the 10-mile lofts project that Brighton did was part of the 10-mile plan as well, and they both have drive aisles and carports for multifamily, and they're part of the 10-mile plan, they absolutely are. And there's some other stuff on the south side of the freeway as well, that has drive aisles and carports, and this is, this is a, I don't resent it, but I'm a little disappointed this is portrayed as being inconsistent, this is not. You know, there's an interpretation that it's not right now, that's new, in my opinion, but that's just kind of how things are right now. So I get it, and if you guys can't move it on with some specific conditions, we respect that, and we didn't want to just steamroll this by you and say, hey, we don't care if you guys deny it, we're going to take it to council and take our chances there, because we want to, we respect whatever you guys decide, so thank you.
Can you address the neighbors in regards to-
I apologize, I apologize, that's an easy thing for us to do, as far as a few extra trees. I mean, it shocked me when Sonya said there was only, you know, a handful of trees required on this thing, and we exceeded it by like 70 or something, I was like, wow, I didn't realize that. So we just, do a few extra trees is not a big deal along that common property line there, and a six-foot solid fence is definitely what we had planned along there, so.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions for the applicant? Thanks, Matt. Sir, I appreciate it, thank you. Do we have a-
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Before we, before we close, if, I think you brought up the possibility of continuing, do you want to bring Matt back up and see if they want to talk about that before we close it?
I, absolutely, if that's the will of the commission, I'm happy to have that conversation.
I guess just to get some of that, if there's a, it didn't sound like it just then, but if, if we want to go down that road before we close it, after we reopen it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I think the comment Matt made earlier was that his hope would be that we would continue it so that we could get approval conditions from staff, and have it come back to us again. That was what his first request was.
Mr. Chair.
Sonya, go ahead.
If I could respond, just for the record, staff did meet with the applicant a couple days ago, and discussed the issues, the inconsistencies with the plan. I did recommend that they continue at that point, we talked about different ways they could revise their plan to meet the design policies in the 10-mile plan. At that time, the applicant wasn't interested in doing a redesign, they wanted to stick with that product type, and so that's why staff went forward with a recommendation of denial. As you know, this, this staff member rarely recommends denial. Try to get there condition-wise if at all possible, in fact, I had a staff report written for approval with, or started to write conditions, and the layout and the building types are just, they're just a different product type that isn't, isn't consistent with this area plan. So there's, there's really no way to condition this for these types of structures and this type of design. Anyway, I'll let the applicant respond to your question, but I just wanted to give that information.
Matt, do you have a response? Because I, I have the same concern. I'm concerned, we don't, we, I'm feeling unease because we're not, it feels like we're not finished or something, it's not, we all have the full package in our minds right now.
No, and I appreciate the chance to talk before you guys close it, and it gets awkward if you want to say some more stuff as you guys are discussing things, so I do appreciate you leaving it open, and let me talk one more time. We did meet with staff, there were some very unclear ways that we could fix this thing, like we don't want to see a parking, we want you to do a spine row with alley loads, and we did a concept of what that looked like, you get about 30 lots, it's something that looks not very good, it doesn't have the full area for amenities, and it just doesn't hit your target densities, it's not, it's more of an attached single-family. All those conditions, like I said, are more, more driven towards an attached single-family than a multifamily condition, so I think there's some misinterpretation, and so we weren't given any easy ways to change this, we're not seeing a way to throw away the drive aisle concept with carports like has been done in a couple other projects in the 10-mile plan. So, so short of throwing away the, we don't want to throw away the drive aisles, if you think it's important that we throw away the drive aisles and throw over, then you might as well concur with staff, but if you're willing to kind of, you know, put on the record that you're okay with it and move on with addressing the other conditions, then we could do that. But I don't want to waste your time or our time to late us three weeks and just come back and still be in the same spot on that particular issue, they're just not a good way to, like I, I'm on the record, is why, so, thanks.
We appreciate it, thank you. Any additional questions for staff before we close the public hearing? Or not?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I think the two options in front of us right now, we couldn't offer approval because we don't have conditions of approval, so the two options we have are to continue the application or to recommend denial. So I think it would be my vote that we keep it open while we deliberate, in case we want to continue, and then if we decide we want to recommend denial, we could close the public hearing at that point.
I'm fine with that, that's what we want to do. You want to take a shot at making a comment, or you want me to lead off?
Mr. Chair, I think, I made some comments to the applicant, I think it's a, it's a tough parcel, because it, to me, it's, it looks like an infill development that's not an infill location. So I don't mind the layout of the multifamily project, I think overall, it, it looks like a standard apartment complex, and it's got a nice pool and clubhouse amenity, which I appreciate, but I certainly see where staff's coming from, where there's a lot of asphalt and it doesn't have the interconnectivity that they're hoping for with the 10-mile area, because we want to see more pedestrian connectivity, where people can ride their bikes to the 10-mile center where there's lots of employment happening, and we want to see more interconnectivity and bus routes and those kind of things. So it's a challenging piece, I wish that it was this piece and the piece to the north and to the piece to the east, that we're looking at a more cohesive parcel, that's what I'm struggling with. So I, I think I'm siding with staff on, on the conditions that I think if we were to continue it, I don't think, it sounds like they're interested in changing anything really with the product type, so we're going to probably come back to the same spot we're at where there's going to be some conditions that they may not want to move forward with. So we're going to kind of do a chicken and egg scenario if we extend it out another two weeks, I don't think we're going to get too many changes, except more work for staff to put together some conditions. So I'm struggling, because I, I certainly feel for the developer, I think it's a nicely laid-out concept, if I could pick it up and move it somewhere else, I would, but I think it's just a challenging piece. That's where my starting thoughts are.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCovin.
Yeah, I would tend to agree, I mean, in the couple of years we worked on that comprehensive plan, and I know in the years that they've been working on the 10-mile interchange project, and what's supposed to go out here, I think, you know, that was labeled one of our biggest opportunities is, this area is to make it what it can be, and I agree, I like the overall design, exactly what Commissioner Holland said, if you can pick it up and move it somewhere else, because it just, it's really land-locking all the development that goes around it, because there's no opportunity for interconnectivity on this, the way it's laid out, I mean, there's, it's just not the appropriate time, I think, on this exact layout. I mean, if there's something else that could go in there that could be connected with what's to come in the future, because you know it's coming. I just, I think it would be unfortunate to have a little piece right in the middle of all of this-
Yeah.
-that cannot be connected in the future.
I, I'm struggling too, because I, I appreciate wanting to give them the benefit of the doubt, but I, and I know this product works in other places, and it's not a bad-looking product, I, I think the hope was to do something more, well, there is three-story and parking underneath it, I mean, but I think the interconnectivity is, is an important piece, not the same thing we've done in other areas, and I think that's the challenge. I just feel like there's, it's not finished or something, there's not, there's a piece that's missing for some reason in my mind, maybe it's the interconnectivity, maybe it's something else, but not, it's just not, doesn't seem finalized. Commissioner Seal.
Mr. Howard, I agree, I, I mean, it's, it, it's a tough piece, and I mean, knowing that the roads are improved, you know, you have something like this, that the density's right for the area, just the layout is incredibly hard, I mean, it's, it kind of has that, it's a parking lot with houses built around it instead of the ability to connect into other things, so, and for this piece, exactly where it is, just isn't, I just don't see that it's going to fit in, in that layout, essentially, so, and it, I mean, the applicant is correct, I mean, it's, it's a small piece of land, so trying to do something else with it that makes it fit that is going to be incredibly difficult to do. And I don't think a continuance is going to help us much here, I mean, number one, we're probably not going to be able to get, get it done in two weeks, I don't think there's any room on the schedule in two weeks unless I'm reading the wrong thing, but it's probably going to go out longer than that, and I agree with Commissioner Holland, we're just going to probably end up right back in the same place.
Commissioner Castanelli?
Ditto. There's not a lot to add there. So do we need to close this? All right, Mr. Chair, I move to close public hearing, H-2019-0122, assent subdivision.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on H-2019-0122, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Follow-on motion, Commissioner Castanelli?
Mr. Chair. I move, after considering all staff applicant public testimony, I move to recommend denial to city council, file number H-2019-0122, is presented during the hearing on January 16th, 2020, following reasons to, doesn't comply with the 10-mile interchange.
I have a motion and a second to recommend denial for file H-2019-0122, assent subdivision, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion for denial is agreed to. Need one more motion, team?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I move, we adjourn the planning and zoning commission for the hearing date of January 16th, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same. We are adjourned.